Good evening, Daytona Beach and visitors, friends. Welcome to the August 7th, 2019 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us this evening. At this time, I would ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available in the front of the room on the table to my right. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted on the bulletin board. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the City Commission during the business meeting. The yellow forms are located next to Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Allison Brown. You must complete the sections and ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Items on the agenda for first reading usually do not allow for public participation. However, there are some instances where citizens are allowed to speak on first reading items when they are considered public hearings. Items on the agenda for second reading are open for public hearing, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under administrative items number 10 are open for public comments, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the City Commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please be clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock on the monitor above and directly in front of you will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time; you will be told when your time has expired. Item number 13 is the public comment forum, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the City Commission. Article to use Section 6238 of the City Code of Oranges reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the City Commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances, therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, or to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the City Commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Delgado?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Gilliland?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Trager?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here. We now have the invocation led by Commissioner Trager, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Delgado. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, look upon us as we try to do the work of the city. Bless those who have been in sorrow over the weekend. We are a better nation than this. We need to fix our problems. Bless our first responders, our police, our service people overseas. Give us the wisdom to do what is best for the people of Daytona Beach, and look upon us and everyone with favor. Thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes. There is one correction to the agenda. The approval of the minutes of the June 19 treaty declining workshop are not on this agenda; they will be on the August 21st. So we'll move on to the approval of the July 3rd, 2019 business meeting of the City Commission.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Trager. Do we have any questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Move on to our agenda. If there are any changes to our agenda, our city manager will address them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to add to the agenda six B under presentations from the Daytona Beach Regional Chamber, nine A, continue nine A and nine B. Those items have to do with LTPGA and intersections associated with those locations. And they, those two will also be presented by the clerk for action.
Okay.
Second.
A motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Trager. If there are no further questions or comments, take a motion, I mean a vote. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Now move on to item number six, which is our presentations. Our first presentation tonight is the Daytona Beach Police Department on the STEM camp.
Awesome. Thank you.
Jakari Young, Deputy Chief of Police for the City of Daytona Beach. And tonight I have with me Sergeant Tim Aaron Koffer and his team, and they make up our Advanced Technology and Cyber Crimes Unit. And what they are primarily responsible for is any and all crime related to the Internet, anything ranging from fraud to identity theft, sexual predator crime against children. And he's also responsible for our drone unit, and he does a phenomenal job with all of it. He was recently tasked with coordinating our first ever STEM camp, which in my opinion was a huge success. And he has put together a short presentation, just an overview of our STEM camp. So I'm going to turn it over to Tim at this time.
Thank you, Chief. Again, Sergeant Aaron Koffer with the Daytona Beach Police Department. The idea for the STEM camp was kind of born here in the commission, so I thought it'd only be appropriate to bring your progress report of how it went. So a quick little presentation on the PowerPoint you'll see, and you can go ahead and cycle This was our registration. Within two days, we were at max with online registration and had a waitlist, and phone calls came in up until the last day of STEM camp with people wanting to participate. We ended up with 30 people. These are some of the children we had in our STEM camp. We did scientific principles; we went over theories with them; they all had hands-on experience with stuff, and also got to take projects home with them as a keepsake. Again, some of the, we had a slime lab, some of the children working on the slime lab. We had ages range from seven to 15. We kept them for four days out of the week, and we kept them pretty much all day, fed them lunch while they were there as well, as you'll see coming up in the slides. We had them build a little catapult to show some more physics and how things launch. Again, the kids got to take home the projects when they were done. Everybody seemed to have a great time. There's me and one of the children competing for distance as far as shooting marshmallows, which went over very well. Another, one of the labs we had was kinetic sand. They got to make kinetic sand in there. We talked about the principles, what makes it kinetic sand, how it works, and then they got to take home the project with them to show their family when they got done at the end of the day. We included our aviation stuff. We started with a simulator where the kids got to play on a simulator flying a drone. And then we had a small drone that we took them out back, and the kids actually flew the drone themselves. So they got the practice of hands-on; they got to fly; they got to see what it looked like up in the air, what it does, what its capabilities are, and then the science behind flight, what causes lift, what causes all that stuff to happen, and they got to experience that firsthand. We had Air One come out from the county to finish off our aviation demonstration on the ultimate flying machine to kind of put our drones down in the category of the smaller ones. They came out, they did a great presentation, talked about the science behind their stuff. And we also had a visit from one of our narcotic drug dogs during our camp that the kids were very happy to play with. We did a detectives academy for all the children. They all got to go through a four-day workshop of a bank robbery that we staged at the PD that included blood on the wall, finding that, fingerprints, evidence, finding the cameras in the room. They worked the whole crime scene, came up with who they thought the suspect was, and then we showed them the video of the crime scene because we also videoed the bank robbery happening. At the end of all this, they got to get a certificate, graduating them from the Texas Academy, signed by the chief and myself, so something to take home, put on the wall, something tangible again that they can show up and be proud of later. Some of the science that was in action, we had some people come in who science is their thing for real, and do some demonstrations about chemical reactions, tornadoes made out of water, and all kinds of litigious stuff. We had some stuff outside where they could actually do physical activities because we don't just want you to be inside looking at stuff. So this was the physics of, you know, Newton's law, every reaction, opposite reaction, and the whole, you know, thing of, can't even think of the word I'm looking for at the moment. But they had to compete on the, so it's a hippo game, like Hungry Hungry Hippo, where they had to tether themselves in, reach in, grab the balls, and we had prizes and stuff as they competed in that. Of course, we fed them. Special thanks to these companies here, they all supplied food free of charge, so we didn't have to pay for any of that. They came in right on time, brought plenty of food for all the kids and the staff that was working the event. We had a cake that was made for the very first STEM camp that they all enjoyed on the last day as part of their graduation from the whole program. Cone of ice came in, did a whole thing where kids come up, make their own snow cones and stuff like that. And we, at the end of the camp, we did a feedback form to the parents that, you know, we appreciate if they would fill it out and just kind of tell us what they thought. And these are some of the comments they had. You know, they came home smiling every day about their day. Every day was a different activity. They loved the opportunity to meet the wonderful staff. And this one was important, feeling safe in a summer camp. That was something that, you had a police department, but a summer camp ran by officers. It's not much of a better safe place than that for your kids to hang out during the day. So the parents are very responsive to that. And of course, the one next year should be two weeks. Not sure I can agree with that one, it was a long four days. But we're hoping that, you know, with the commission's backing and stuff, that we can maybe do this again next year. Think that might be the last one. And that's pretty much it. Just wanted to give you all kind of a progress report, how it went. All feedback was great, publicity was great, there was no, all the kids, nobody came back broken or injured. Everybody was fed, they all had a good time, so.
Yeah, yeah. Let me commend you guys on what I know was a great experience. And I want to say that it's so important that our kids have access to this type of experience. And it's ironic that the parents said that because, you know, as a parent of a child who was there, and you look for safe activities all summer for your kid. But the one thing that when I took him there, that was the safest time that I felt away from him, because I knew he was at the police department. And so it's funny that the parents said that, but the reality is that my kid is, sends the same sentiments, came home every day excited. And I want to say to the commission, to you in particular, Commissioner Henry, because I know you were very much pushing for STEM activities, but to all of you for supporting this, this is a critical time in our city in terms of our children. And tomorrow night, we will start with the mayor's initiative on literacy. And the reality is that three of our elementary schools and one school that we feed into received Ds in their academic performance. So all that we can do as a community to stimulate their curiosity in education and learning, particularly as I, my view is always that their reading is critical at an early age. So we're going to start with ages five to seven tomorrow night. But by all means, I want to encourage us to support this again next year, because this was on another level, but it engaged our kids. And that, this is how you, and we've got a lot of exciting things going on in Daytona Beach that you guys can draw on. The hubs that are going on as it relates to trying to attract more folks who are in the space industry and in the technology arena, a lot of areas are changing. So I want to commend you, you were there every day with a good attitude, and the whole staff. Everybody was so happy, and they seemed to want to be there. And that's the most important aspect of working with kids. So again, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And to our community, I want to encourage you all to call Ms. Goodman to get involved with this reading initiative that's starting with the five to seven-year-olds, because it's critical that we propel them through school with confidence to read. So join with that, and I look forward to seeing you guys next year. Chief?
Just one last thing to add, was that our school resource officers also volunteered, being that they were out of school.
Mm-hmm.
So pretty much all of our school resource officers also volunteered, well, not technically didn't volunteer, but they were, they took part. They took part in the STEM camp, and they all reported back that they enjoyed it just as much as the children did, so.
Yeah.
And of course, it was free to any kid that wanted to come. We didn't charge $200 like some places around here do, which is, it was free.
Yeah.
And you're planning next year, right?
We're working on it, absolutely. I've already started looking at some new ideas so that if some of the same kids come again, they can see something fresh to learn. So we're already working on it, myself and my team back in the back of the room, already coming with ideas.
Wonderful.
The rest of the team stand so we can see your faces and commend you on a great job.
Sergeant, it looks really fun. I would like to do some of those things.
I'll be looking to you for donations.
But I was going to say, speaking to that point, what, what can we do, is my mic on? What can we do, is there anything we, you need specifically that we can, well, you got the floor, that we can give you? I mean, what's a realistic ex, you had 16 students?
We had 30.
30. What do you need to get to the next stage? Is there anything we can help, whether it's the commissioner, people in the community, or, you know, people watching at home?
On the commission side, honestly, funding, a little money set aside somewhere in some fund that's in this place somewhere, because that's the hardest part. I mean, we're out there, you know, begging for donations, getting free food, trying to get people to give us discounted services. We wanted everybody to have T-shirts, so we spent the money for T-shirts for everybody to have another keepsake. So funding would be important, especially if we want to up it to more people, it's more food, more programs, more stuff. So that's important on the community side, donations, posting stuff on your boards that it exists, maybe something at the office about it, you know, just donations, just money, money, money is the stuff that it takes to do these camps. And we don't want to charge the kids, because we want to make sure that every kid has the opportunity to get to these camps. So if we start putting out money, then this kid doesn't get to go, and that's not acceptable. So we want to keep it free, so we just need some, some financial backing from the community, maybe from, from the city, whatever we can get.
Mm-hmm. And I will add, as one who's mentored kids for about 30 years now, food, doesn't matter their socioeconomic background, is a driver, especially for those of the masculine gender.
One of the kids, what was your favorite part? He said the food. Some of these kids, as you know, don't, they don't get lunch when school's out.
Yeah.
They don't get that opportunity, the parents can't afford it. So this is somewhere for them to get lunch, at least for a few days.
Yeah, so, okay.
I just, I want to comment because this was something that I really was so excited about and pushed, pushed for. And I just want to thank each and every person. I know it's hard sometimes just working with children and working with their little personalities, even for just a couple hours. So imagine doing that four days, all day long. And I want to thank you, you all, for not just putting on the camp, but putting on a solid, a really, really solid camp.
Really good.
Because anybody can come in and put some kids in a room and do a couple things and say, "We did a, we did a STEM camp," and say, "We've accomplished the goal." But it takes a lot of work and input to do what you all did on, on that video. It was far greater than what I could have imagined that it was going to be. I had, I never thought it was going to be like that. And just hearing our little camper come home and talk about, about it every day and how excited he was, and if he was that excited, I know other children were just as excited about it. So going forward, I hope that's something that we all can support and get behind, and even the community will support it and get behind. My first idea for this was that when I looked into STEM camps at, at the college, it was $900 a week. And so I knew that that was nothing that people that I knew, or most people, would be able to afford. You, you have to be on a totally different income level to be able to afford a STEM camp $900 a week. And so the fact that you all were able to do this and not charge children $900 a week when it looks like a camp that should have cost $900 a week, I just want to say kudos and thank you very much. Looking forward to this again next year.
Thank you, we appreciate it very much.
Great job, okay.
Moving on to our next presentation is a presentation from the Daytona Beach Regional
Chambers, Mr. Bob Williams and Mr. Kent Sharples to present.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to share with you a couple of highlights of a recent inner-city visit, actually an intrastate trip that we took to southwest Florida. My name is Bob Williams. It's my honor to serve at our world-class community health system owned by our community, Halifax Health. But I'm here speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Daytona Regional Chamber as the Chair of the Economic Development Division. These inner-city trips are intended to learn from communities we visit, identify best practices, and gain awareness of potential landmines on issues that may be in front of us or our community. We focused on the success of St. Petersburg, Florida, with additional meetings in Benita Springs and Fort Myers as we traveled around southwest Florida. On this trip, we received key presentations on the following: attainable housing, how infrastructure and economic development work together, growing smarter with examples of equity, collaboration, inclusivity, and accessibility, how public art and murals can enhance the aesthetics of a community, the importance of public-private partnerships. And we also visited examples of shared work hubs for small businesses and entrepreneurs. We had a cross-section of leaders from our community on the trip, including the Housing Authority, mental health, healthcare, tourism, corporate business, real estate, and transportation experts. Most importantly, we had representation from the leadership of the city with our city manager, Jim Chisholm, and council member, Quanita May. We walked away from the trip feeling very empowered and renewed, with a renewed understanding of our future potential. We also gained a clear understanding that it takes visionary leadership and partnerships from both the public and private sector interests to strategically align and be willing to move things forward. We want to publicly thank city manager and council member May for their active participation, their thoughtful questions of the presenters, and their desire to take key lessons we learned and bring them back to our community for further discussion and action. It's never an easy lift to lead change, but we are confident in the leadership of the city, both the administration and all of you as elected officials, to be bold and visionary. I want to end this as we asked the participants on the trip their thoughts and commitment to see some of these lessons learned put into action. One resounding statement was expressed: Be mindful of how far we have come. We are an authentic, desirable community with many assets to attract quality growth and a wonderful quality of life. We need to continue to adopt a "we can do this" attitude. We need to listen and be inclusive, and we need to understand that change is inevitable. So it's incumbent on us to write our own story and strive to be the area that others come to, to learn about our successes. We would love the opportunity to come back and, in a future meeting, with more specifics on the ideas and specifics around the trip. Thank you for allowing us just a few minutes of your time this evening to share with you our commitment to work alongside our city and county to continue the dialogue and determine a community strategy that will be the foundation of a successful model for our success. As we were there and we saw the partnerships, there are some things going on in our city that people don't realize are exactly the kinds of things that we heard of and learned about. And I'd like to ask Dr. Kent Sharples if he would come up and share something about that. Thank you all very much for your leadership.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate your sentiments.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, my name is Kent Sharples. I'm with the CEO Business Alliance, and I'm here, I'm at 825 Blue Road. And I'm here tonight to thank the commission and tying together with what Bob just said and what the chamber's been involved with, to really express our gratitude, the alliance's gratitude, for this collaborative effort between what goes on at the city level and the private-public partnerships that we have as we move forward with companies like B-Brawn. So I'm here tonight to, to talk to you for just a second about B-Brawn, who is finishing up Phase One, that's the project that's over on Mason Avenue, and also have finished by now Phase Two, as you've noticed, that's Clyde Morris, the distribution center that's over there, and about ready to announce Phase Three, which will be another 150 million. The first two phases, about 250 million. This third phase will be about another 150 million with, with another 100 jobs. And the reason B-Brawn is here, and not unlike the issues that we dealt with with the last mile distribution center for Amazon, which is out there on the Mason Avenue extension, is a collaborative effort that they have found as they have developed partnerships with the city of Daytona Beach, with the Alliance, with the Chamber of Commerce, and other economic development groups. And so I'm here to invite you, this call came late this afternoon, and if you'll have your calendars with you and could mark September the 12th, the entire B-Brawn board will be here, including their newly appointed chair, Anna Marie Braun. She's the new chair of the B-Brawn organization out of Germany. And as you know, this is the sixth largest medical manufacturing, manufacturer of devices. And here, of course, what they make is a saline solution. But this extension, expansion that will go into Phase Three will include many other products besides just the saline. And they are there because of their very appreciative reception from the city, and would like to entertain the entire City Commission at lunch on the 12th to thank you personally. And the gentleman that will be here is Jürgen Schlosser. Now, I know I'm not saying that right, it's a German name, but he is the chief operating officer. Many of you know Bruce Hugo. Bruce is the chief financial officer, and he's the front guy that sets up the, the direction that the company is going in North America. But Jürgen is the guy that is in charge of all of their operations from this point forward. So he is extending an invitation to you this evening for noon on the 12th, a place yet to be determined, because I just got this information this afternoon. And again, his thanks, our thanks for the collaboration that's occurred between the city and these large manufacturers, this, and these jobs, by the way, are 40 to 60,000 dollars that are, and there'll be over 500 of them by the time they get through. So thanks to the city on behalf of the Alliance and on behalf of B-Brawn, we really appreciate the collaborative effort that the entire city staff has done to put together all those issues dealing with the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, and the impact fees and so forth. So thank you for allowing me this few minutes.
Comments?
Mr. Sharples, if I might, that's over here. It's, it's nice that the jobs are coming at 40 and 60,000. I love that. What are we doing for those who perhaps aren't qualified for that level of a position? Would there be positions for others who could be in perhaps the, the 30s and the, the 40s?
Well, of course, the distribution centers represent lower-level paying jobs, and those jobs are forthcoming, and there'll be others of those types of jobs coming in the very near future. I'm sure you'll understand the nature of economic development, most of it's very quiet, and I think you'll be hearing more about some of those efforts, including the distribution center that Braun has, and also the Amazon Center that's out there on the Mason Avenue extension, which by the way, I think is slated open in about five weeks, so very quickly done.
Very good. Just wanted that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Sharples, and certainly that B-Brawn is a great partner in 500 jobs, and I realize the complexity of putting a deal like that together, how difficult that is to work it out so that the company is willing. Now, is it true, I'll just ask you this question from the seat, are they moving jobs from other locations here?
No, sir. All of these jobs, well, there'll be, of course, a few key jobs. As you know, they bought the old Gambro facility, so a few of those people are, have been retained, including Pete Larson, many of you remember Pete from Gambro. All of the employees, in fact, Gambro has released all those employees at the end of their contract to the Gambro facility. Braun has hired many of those same people back, and all of those folks will be, except for the very top management group, people that were hired from Gambro.
Awesome.
And Bruce has been here twice.
I've met him.
To negotiate with Jim, one-on-ones on many of these issues. Brought this to fruition.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, this is our public comments by people addressing the City Commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the City Commission on any item that is on the consent agenda. Our first speaker is John Nicholson, speaking on multiple items, and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I cut three of them out, so it's just 8O, R, and G. 8O is the school resource officers. There are 11 of them. We have two schools that the School Board has zoned out. The students of Daytona Beach, Seabreeze High School, and Henson Junior High are predominantly Ormond Beach students. Is Ormond Beach going to contribute anything towards the officers? They should, since it's mostly their students. Secondly, on the Hugel, I understand you're, have already decided that. It's the insurance company is pushing it. Several months ago, we had Sonia. I ask you to have an ironclad procedure in place so that when somebody has a complaint, they know exactly who to go to. It's documented, so we won't have to go through this. It's going to be, what, $400,000 or $4 million we're going to lose if we lose a third suit? So the, I don't think, I think we still have the firemen to go. So I'm asking you to make sure that we don't go through this again. If they have a complaint, they know who to go to. It's documented, and it's solved as soon as possible. And lastly, first-step shelter. If we've saved money on sales tax and whatnot for first-step shelter, a used kitchen could easily be purchased for the amount of money that we saved. A used kitchen is not $400,000. That's every possible conceivable instrument or equipment for a kitchen for $400,000. We don't need all of that. So I'm asking if we are saving at 6.5% times the $3 million to $4 million, that would be purchase price of items, that'd be $180,000 to $200,000, that could easily buy a kitchen for first-step shelter. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Doyle Lewis, speaking on 8N and G, and on deck is Ken Strickland.
Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, United States. I'm going to speak on one small thing before I go on these two. When you're having a class or a camp, please put notices, especially when it's outside. That way, people understand that it's a class or a camp. Ran into several, several issues with that. Me being in the wrong place at the right time for all the wrong reasons. And if it's not a noticeable situation, you can jump to conclusions. So when you have an outside activity, make sure it's marked. I visibly enforced pedestrian and bicycle safety. Been talking to that for years. So happy to see this on this agenda. There's been so many people that just been run over, walking out there, that most people don't understand if you run over somebody with an automobile of any kind and hurt them severely, that you change their lives forever. Happy to see that. Now, the first-step shelter, which I've been speaking on so many times. If you're going to save money, it's a catch-22 when you're talking about direct buying, which cuts out a lot of people, but at the same time, it cuts down the cost of the project. But at the same time, there's no revenue flowing higher. So that's a catch-22, from what I'm reading, because the more you spend on a project, you save it this way or you save it that way. So I'm pretty sure even if you do save it on the shelter, which it's way over budget, more than likely, you're going to make it up somewhere else, because that's how economics works. If you've ever been to an economic course, you have to account for every penny of every tax dollar. It's like a banker on increments of pennies. So one way or another, you're going to make it up and hide it over here, put it over there. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ken Strickland, speaking on item 8R, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Ken Strickland, 1208 North Halifax. Conspicuously absent from 8R here is any numbers, dollar figures. Outside, attorney's fees probably added up to about $525,000. That's over and above the $600,000, which brings us to a million point one-two to settle this case. This is the second such incident in the last couple of years of discrimination. I'm sure that the women and the minorities that are still working here are feeling the effects of working in a toxic environment, the pressure of that. The City Manager is responsible for these types of blunders and should be held accountable for this going forward. The residents can't afford to pay this kind of money out every so often over these situations. I know there are only $350,000 each out of the city's coffers. The rest is paid by insurance. Shouldn't be happening to begin with. Thank you.
And our final speaker on the consent agenda is Marjorie Johnson.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Key Street. I'm here tonight because I'm concerned, too, about the large payments that we are paying out on these lawsuits. Sonia Porter-Wiles, she filed a huge lawsuit and received over half a million dollars. Also, we have Hugel, who is suing you also for discrimination. So the perception is that there's a lot of discrimination going on here in this city. You wouldn't be getting all these lawsuits from employees who feel that they are being discriminated against. You should have to be accountable to the employees and residents for the huge sums of money that you are paying out for discrimination. Why don't you have something in place to avoid this? Sonia Wiles reported over and over again about the discrimination that she had endured here at this city. She was sexually harassed by her employer, Mr. Macklemore. I have all of the paperwork here. I came in here today to, and paid money to receive this paperwork. Hugel is suing you all because he felt that you promoted people over him, and he was more highly qualified. I was called in as a witness. The city subpoenaed me to come and speak. But I do know that discrimination takes place because this happened to me. I've been asked to move for my seats, to move to the back of the room. So I would like to say to you tonight that Sonia Wiles and her complaint commended that she was called a bitch, who read T-shirts, they wanted to have a private affair with her. All of this went on, something about sex toys. All of this is here in this paperwork that I came here today and received from your, from Ms. Macklemore's office. And I had put in for this paperwork some time ago. Hugel felt that he was so harassed, and it was a misdemeanor to his health that he had to leave. You should not have to work in this city and be harassed and abused by people who are here to look out for our residents. So I'm asking you to not to stop it and run a professional operation. Thank you.
That was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Delgado. Do we have any questions or comments?
I'd like to say something, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo the Mayor's comments that he stated in the News Journal. And he said, "I'm saddened when we find ourselves in this place." To tell you the truth, I'm embarrassed that our city, in 2019, finds itself in a racial-age discrimination settlement with the son of a former council member and civil rights icon, Jimmy Hugel, who sat and fought for us to be able to sit up here. Something's wrong. As my mama would say, "Something in the milk ain't clean." We cannot, as a commission, continue to bury our heads in the sand. As stated by some of our citizens this evening, this is the second lawsuit of this financial, severe financial magnitude that we're facing. This is, there's a lot of money for nothing to have been done. So I say we need to find some kind of, is it the process that we're doing? Is it management? Whatever the case may be, we need to do something. Because we spend more time, if you're a working person, raise your hand. If you're still working, you're not retired. We spend more time at our jobs than we do at home. And for our employees, our staff, to come here and to work, they need to come to a place where they feel comfortable, where they can do their jobs, where they're excited about doing their jobs, and they provide for us and provide for our citizens the best possible skills and talents that they have. So I say to you this evening, we need to address this. We proudly shine the light on the things that we're doing good, and we got a lot of good things going on, but we need to shine the light on some of the ugly stuff, too. And we need to take care of it. And I think our citizens want us to do that. So I beseech you, my sisters and my brothers, that we sit down and we talk about this process so we don't find ourselves here again. There may be a suiting process that we can't control, but we can stop it from that point forward.
Are there any, are there any training classes being done now that to avoid something like this again? You shouldn't have to train people not to be discriminated.
Well, you do. You do have to train them, and we should hear from HR to see what our protocols and procedures are that we have in place for training, and then to determine whether we want to enhance those, because as Commissioner points out, they're not adequate.
Mr. Mayor, we do have training classes, and we do send our management through those classes. And, you know, it's, there's a lot of issues with different individuals that some of them are not related to necessarily the job, the situation in some cases, but all of those are individual. So you have to, you have to take that into consideration. Now, we do have a process set up where if they have a complaint, they file that complaint. That complaint is investigated. And if, in every case where we found any instance of issue, we have taken action to correct that case. But there's nothing that we can do to stop somebody from suing us as it relates to any action that may have taken place.
But we do have a paper trail that management has gone through this, and
We do.
We do all we can do then.
Yeah, but there's a, yeah, please make sure you, no public comment. But we have to make sure, one, that the training is adequate.
Absolutely.
And that it is of a nature that is sufficient to curb. And we all work in environments where we realize that allegations can be made, and it doesn't necessarily mean that it's not, that it's true, but it, but I had a very hard time with the amount of money. It was just, I really did, I don't know, I didn't read the article in the paper, but I did leave the meeting with sort of indigestion. It was a tough place to be. But, so maybe we need to have some sort of review, or you might want to have Human Resources to bring us a workshop to show us what type of training we're receiving. Because, you know, policies from time to time do need to be reviewed. And I realize even in my job, with new personnel taking place, new supervision, new senior management, we've been required to have a different level of training or different type of training now because they see things in a different way. And so sometimes it's tough, you have to step back and take a fresh approach and look at things a little differently to see how we can do them better. Any other comments? That's my sentiment.
Agreed. And also, in addition to what you and Paula were saying, is that we have to treat it with urgency. And even with the training, I think we need to train and retrain, and maybe retrain, and retrain until we get it right, until we see an improvement, until we, until we all feel comfortable, until the citizens feel comfortable that we're working hard to get it right. Sometimes the first training isn't, it doesn't catch on the first training. Sometimes it doesn't catch on the second or third training. So, you know, maybe it's something that we're going to have to train and retrain, and as we train, we are going to have to let them know that this is urgent, and it's urgent for everyone involved. And so I think maybe a workshop, just starting with us, perhaps, so that we can review what's happening and what's going on, and what the training procedures and processes are. And then if we feel good with what, where the training procedures and processes are right now, then we say, okay, we're going to leave it right here. But if we think we need to take this a little bit further, and we're not okay with that, then we need to amend those to, because we're the first line of defense. It's right here. Right here is the first line of defense. And I think it has to start here.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say something? Go ahead.
No, you go ahead. Go ahead, sir. Sorry.
I recognize Commissioner Gilliland. Make your choice.
Let's remember that in both of these cases, the insurer pulled out the hammer clause and said, "If you go forward, we're out, and you're on the hook for everything." And, you know, we might have won them both. We didn't admit, you know, any liability or wrongdoing in either case.
That's correct.
So, you know, we're, I'm just going to make sure our commentary, and I totally agree, you can always do things better. In the training we did last year, there's better training available for next year. We need to constantly evolve and do a better job with that. You know, my experience, and I'm not equating this to either of these cases because I wasn't involved in the detail enough, but a lot of times it comes down to people doing reviews aren't critical enough of the employees. So when it comes around time to review a complaint, and all of a sudden, everybody got these good, better-than-average reviews, and when all of a sudden their performance maybe wasn't quite at that level, then all of a sudden, they look very believable, even though perhaps they should not have been. And, you know, everybody wants to be nice, everybody wants to, you know, to make somebody feel like they're not doing a good job, but sometimes you do need to be honest. And, you know, in this case, like I said, the commentary up here, it sounds like we're admitting that we did something wrong, and we didn't. But I do, I completely agree with everybody that training is the key to this. And I do believe another piece of that is good documentation about employee performance, because that will come back in the end to bite you if you don't do a good job of it today.
But I think you make a great point in making that statement, but we may want to assess and ask that management is encouraging a fair and accurate assessment of people's performance.
I bet if you did a peer review of the different managers and the way they score their employees, you'd find enormous disparity. You know, you'll find somebody who's very honest and constructive with their criticism, who scores are on average below somebody whose scores are constantly, you know, above average or excellent. And, you know, that's a problem. That should not happen. It would be very easy to determine the fact that we probably are not doing a good job in that position, because most companies do not. And granted, we're a government, but I still think of us as, in this case, we're talking about as an employer.
Okay. So I think we have three people, four people, who want to have some sort of report. Do you have any want to weigh in at all before I make a recommendation?
I was going to agree with what Commissioner Gilliland was saying about this was the insurance company stepping in and saying, you know, that we, that they were going to settle if we didn't. So that was, I was just going to make the same point Commissioner Gilliland had to make.
Okay. And I think that should be understood. I mean, that should be understood. It wasn't that staff wanted to relent. They were willing to push forward in both cases, but that's the nature of insurance. And then we don't want to be on the hook in the unfortunate situation that we were not successful.
But certainly in this culture, and with evolving standards and evolving, reexamining old ways, I think constantly retraining is very important. I think we have rapidly evolving standards and different standards in the workplace than we had, you know, from year to year. So I think retraining is, you know, certainly a worthy goal.
Mm-hmm. All right.
The Commissioner may want to say something?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Yeah, you did have your, okay. Okay. So moving forward, is there a recommendation? I have one, but one of you want to make a recommendation of an expectation from staff? Because I think we should have, as you said, something that pushes us forward to be better. And at the end of the day, we don't manage the day-to-day operations, but we want to make sure that we have procedures that are in place that we can support and that we, as a body, feel confident in, that are helping us not to be in this situation. And I think that's a fair place to want to be as an elected body.
And that's my point, that we don't want to be in this situation. And I agree with Commissioner Gilliland in regards to performancy valves, but I think we also need to consider that when employees make complaints that perhaps they're not being treated fairly, that we need to take that seriously as well, that we shouldn't just brush that under the carpet. Because although some people are good at what they do, and then they're promoted to management, they may not know how to manage. They may not know how to deal with people. So, you know, it could be on either side of the track in regards to that. So I think the workshop is fine and whatever recommendation you're about to make.
Okay. Well, I don't know whether it should be a workshop or Well, I don't know whether it should be a workshop or whether we want to ask, uh...
We need a workshop, Mayor. We'll, uh, we'll report the process, identify the process...
Yes.
Explain what, uh, what it is, and, uh, answer any questions, and take additional direction if you have anything at that time.
Okay. And, and, well, then if it's a workshop, from my perspective, I would like, um, obviously the protocols, procedures that we have in place for training, but also any documentation is given, uh, to our staff, and as well as, uh, you know, who's providing the, uh, the training. And those are some of the things I would like. Is there anything you all would like added to that, or if you think of anything you'd like added, you may want to shoot them an email. Okay? Any further questions or comments? Okay. All right.
We had a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, is there any other comments on the consent agenda that you, that you want to address or statements you want to make? All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item number nine A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Integrated LPGA Resoning Plan, Resoning to Plan Development General and Preliminary Platte. This is an ordinance on second reading, quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezon 391.8 plus or minus acres of property generally located west of North Tamoca Farms Road, east of LPGA Boulevard, and north of West International Speedway Boulevard from SFR 5 Single Family Residential to PDG Plan Development General District, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Integrated LPGA Plan District Agreement with American SW30 Investments LLC to develop a mixed residential development and approval of Integrated LPGA Phase A1 Preliminary Platte, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date, and at the request of the applicant, have this item continue to the August 21st, 2019 City Commission Meeting.
Second.
Take a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine B, it's the Development and Administrative Services American SW30 Investments LLC Integrated LPGA Proportionate Fair Share Agreement, Resolution Public Hearing. A resolution approving the American SW30 Investments LLC Integrated LPGA Proportionate Fair Share Agreement with American SW30 Investments LLC and the County of Volusia, providing for the proportionate fair share contribution by American SW30 Investments LLC relating to transportation facility concurrency for the American SW30 Investments LLC Integrated LPGA Project, generally located west of North Tamoca Farms Road, east of LPGA Boulevard, south and east of Municipal Stadium, and north of West International Speedway Boulevard, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement and providing an effective date. On behalf of the applicant, this item's been asked to be continued to the August 21st, 2019 City Commission Meeting.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Trager, second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. This motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine C, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Tamoca Town Center Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance adopting a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163 Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use element Neighborhood S to decrease non-residential development floor area ratios and increase residential density for approximately 14.47 plus or minus acres generally located of Mason Avenue and west of Williamson, generally located north of Mason Avenue and west of Williamson Boulevard, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Second.
I will take a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
I do have Mr. Rob Merrill here, uh, on behalf of the applicant, if you have any questions.
Uh, do we have any questions for Mr. Merrill? No questions, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted...
Public comment?
No, no.
No speakers.
Any speaker? Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine D, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Tamoca Town Center, First Amendment to Tamoca Town Center Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on second reading, quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Tamoca Town Center Plan District Agreement to increase the number of permitted dwelling units, increase maximum building height, reduce the floor area ratio, modify lot development criteria, and modify permitted signage, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Reed.
And again, I have Mr. Rob Merrill here on behalf of the applicant for questions, and he's the only speaker.
And no additional speaker?
No additional speakers.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine E. It is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, 100 to 200 Block, South Caroline Street, Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance adopting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163.3187 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation for 3.0 plus or minus acres of property generally located long and west of South Caroline Street between International Speedway Boulevard and Orange Avenue from commercial retail and commercial transition to Level 2 Residential, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Second.
Awesome. Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Trager.
I have no speakers for this item.
No speakers, any comments from the commission? Okay. Uh, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine F, it's the Development and Administrative Services Redevelopment Division, 100 to 200 Block, South Caroline Street, Resoning to Redevelopment Midtown Residential Preservation, RDM 6. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezon 3.0 plus or minus acres of property generally located along and west of South Caroline Street between International Speedway Boulevard and Orange Avenue from RDM 3 Redevelopment Midtown Activity Center Mixed Use and RDM 5 Redevelopment Midtown Neighborhood Transition Mixed Use to RDM 6 Redevelopment Midtown Residential Preservation, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
No moved. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Gilliland.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to item number nine G, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, North Williamson Square, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading, public hearing. An ordinance adopting a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163 Part 2 Florida statutes, amending the future land use element Neighborhood K and Neighborhood S to remove the requirement limiting commercial development on only three corners at the intersection of Williamson Boulevard and LPGA Boulevard and Clyde Morris Boulevard and LPGA Boulevard, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, do we have any speakers?
I have Mr. Michael Schnapp Tyler here on behalf of the applicant, if you have any questions, and no additional speakers.
Do we have any questions, Michael? Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for October 2nd. Moving on to item number nine H, it's the Public Works Technical Services Division, 95 LPGA Final Platte. This is a resolution, quasi-judicial hearing. A resolution approving the final platte for 95 LPGA, a commercial subdivision of 35.41 plus or minus acres of land located north of LPGA Boulevard and east of I-95, authorizing the city manager to sign the final platte and permit recordation thereof upon meeting certain conditions precedent, authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute the contract for platte recording for the subdivision and providing an effective date.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Henry.
I have no speakers for this item.
All right. Uh, no further comments. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, seven zero.
We'll now move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Land Development Code Text Amendment, amend Article 6 District Sign Set Schedules. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, amending Section 6.10.0K to allow for institutional uses within residential zoning districts to have one externally illuminated monument sign at a maximum height of six feet and a maximum sign area of one square foot of sign for every three linear feet of lot frontage, up to 32 square feet, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments on this? Uh, I have some questions about this.
Where's Pam?[1253.66][1253.66][laughing] In my briefing, was I told that it was primarily the churches that wanted this, that was asking for this? Am I correct or forgetting?
Mr. Mayor, Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager, you're correct. There's a ministry that asked for it. In the circumstances, signage isn't allowed in the residential areas while churches are. So they need some identification of their property. If you take 32 square feet, that's roughly the size of a sheet of plywood. That's the maximum size they can have, so it's not a very large sign, the purpose being to identify a place of worship or other places it may be of similar nature, and have some direction so you know where to stop and turn to go in. But it's a relatively small sign. They're externally lighted, which means you're just gonna light it with a light from the outside versus having something that's fluorescent, lighted, and, you know, gonna be more intrusive in terms of light. So it's designed to minimize things. From a standards perspective, it's similar to, but smaller than the typical subdivision identification sign that you could have for residential property.
When you're saying externally illuminated...
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Morris, so there will be bulbs like shining on it rather than it being like these LED signs?
Yeah, so you'd have a sign like this, and then typically a spotlight type, a couple to give even lighting, even lighting across the face of the sign. But that's less illumination than you ordinarily would get if you had an LED or a cabinet with fluorescent lights inside, which is gonna send light all around.
Is there a timeframe on when these, when the light can be lit?
We didn't do that. We could do that. I mean, it's certainly gonna be evening hours, but you, we can do that if you need to do that in its first reading, so you could amend it.
I don't know of a 24/7 church. There may be one. But there were some concerns from citizens about bringing these into the residence, so I'm wondering if we wanted to regulate when the light would be lit.
Well, if the commission wishes to do so, now is the time to do it, as its first reading. And you get some general direction, we can implement that into this amendment and bring it back to you on second. It'll be a part of your consideration on the second reading.
I'm considering when services are taking place, be it regular worship or any special services they may offer, so that it can illuminate for people to know where they're coming. I mean, when you're just driving by, okay, there's caloric restrictions on them, and, you know what I mean? So I would like to, I gotta amend the motion, to add that in there.
Well, rather than being a church service-related amendment, it probably best to have a time, um, no later than 10, no later than 11, something like that.
I, I would say ordinary practice would be to say hours of illumination, so you could perhaps say from sunset till 10, or 11, or 9. Whatever the time you think collectively as a commission is appropriate for ceasing illumination in the residential area, you could, you know, you have lighting that comes from houses as well. So from a uniform perspective of whether it's a church or not, a time standard versus a service or an event standard would be the more appropriate way to go.
Mm-hmm. So I'm looking at illumination until maybe 10:00 PM.
Sorry?
After 10:00 PM.
So are you saying that to say make it earlier?
I don't think that it will... I don't think that there needs to be a time limit, personally. I'm not understanding why there would be a time limit.
You say, use the mic.
Oh, sorry, I am using the mic. Um, I don't understand why there would be a time limit.
Well...
What's the, what's the, what is the rationale for having a time limit? Just so that it can be regulated?
And for the, the external light that's affecting people's homes when they, when they're at home, they don't want all that additional lighting?
It's, Mayor and Commission, it's a policy question, what your collective wisdom is, whether to do it or not, it's up to y'all. And we're not making comment in regard to it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I kind of, uh, understand the sentiment. The idea is that since it is a residential area, and you want to maintain the, not sanctity, but the privacy of a residential area, you would maybe want to consider, you, we wouldn't allow another business to come into a residential area and have, um, lighting that, you know, free lighting, we may not even allow it to be present. Since we do allow churches to be in that community, maybe we want to consider regulating it. I had, I had a question about it, too, so that was my, I did have a question. Does anyone else have a concern with it?
Paul, your motion, your, is to amend, is an amendment to the motion to put a time limitation of 10:00 PM?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Commissioner Gilliland was the motioning, Commissioner Delgado was the second.
So you have to amend your motion?
I mean, I thought you were issuing it as an amendment, so...
Yes, okay, I'm issuing it as an amendment. So he amended his motion.
We vote on the amendment, and then we vote on the... You can just amend your motion.
You can just amend your motion, and then, and then he can second it if he doesn't want...
Withdraw my second to the amendment that Paula has put forth. If Paula will amend...
Withdraw.
I withdraw my amendment.[1578.34][1578.34][laughing]
Then I will amend the original motion to, uh, ask that staff add a requirement that illumination must cease at 10:00 PM.
Second your motion?
No, you go ahead.
You have seconded amendment. You were the second.
I don't necessarily want to second it, because I don't think that it's necessary.
Oh, then I second the amendment.
Okay.
All right, so now we go back to the original, right? Because now we... That fails because he had, the original second has to agree to the amendment.
So now you just redo it.
Here we go again. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw my motion to amend the original motion. And then Paul's gonna...
We'll do, we'll vote on him.
You move for amend, and then Rob will second.
Yeah.
What'd he say?
You, you, you gonna make the motion?
I'll, I'll make, I'll make...
You've withdrawn everything. We have no motion on the table, on the floor.
No, no, we still have the original motion for this item. So I believe Delgado has withdrawn his second.
Yes, he has.
You've withdrawn your original motion.
So it's not...
I think there's no motion.
No motion.
No motion.
Now there has to be a motion. So now we can make a new motion with the 10 o'clock deadline...
Yeah.
Which will be seconded by somebody and voted upon after public comment. Well, I guess those who've already had public comments, so...
It's first reading.
Oh, it's first reading.
First reading.
I'm ahead of ourselves. Okay, very good. Okay, then I make a motion to approve with the additional requirement that illumination must cease at 10:00 PM.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We do not have to take public comment on this matter, uh, but we will take public comment on the next, uh, voting, uh, for this issue.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment on this?
Yes.
You know, there's a lot of churches where there's houses right across the street. So people leaving spotlights on that are maybe off the gilter a little bit, or there's a glare, you know, I can easily see that being disturbing to people that are, you know, on, across the street or maybe the first house in. the street or maybe the first house in. Um, I don't see any reason why we should be in a position that we have to allow, you know, all nighttime illumination.
And we have a lot of churches that are adjacent and next door to, um, residences.
Yes.
So, okay.
Would, would this apply to existing churches, so across the board? Or is this new? Is this a new ordinance?
It applies to existing churches that are in a residential community and desires to have, um, this sort of sign.
Right now, they're not allowed to have a sign, the sign can't be, they can't have a sign at all.
In, in this district, in this district, that's true, yes.
So they can't have a sign at all. So this would allow a sign and then with lighting, and the amendment will allow lighting, but only, but make it quit, make it stop at ten o'clock.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll take a roll call vote.
Yeah, let me remind you before we do that, this is first reading.
Yeah, so we shouldn't vote against it. That's correct.
So we can have public hearing on the next second reading.
Yeah, I just wanna make-
I, in the interest of, uh, I don't know about if I wanna get into the business of regulating it, but are, is there a way to write it, like you know how you have decimal readings for noise? Is there like a lumens thing for lighted signs? Do you say like, no more than this intensity? Because I have a similar lighted sign on the front of my building and it's very localized. It doesn't, doesn't scatter a lot of light. Um, but obviously, I'm not in a residential area.
There are measurement capabilities that typically done at the boundary lines of adjacent property, because the idea is you're regulating impact from your property to the adjacent property. The differential between what you have and what's at issue here is that you are in a commercial zone where this is a residential zone, which is why this amendment is coming up, to permit something that presently does not exist.
Right, I was just saying from my personal experience, I think I'm actually, is that, um, it's mixed, that, um, it's not, it's not as bright as, this type of signage is not as bright as what people think of.
It is not.
So maybe, is that another way of doing it? Could we say that if we're gonna limit the light, that we do it by a certain intensity? Um, that way, we can see if it actually even gets to be a problem? Because I, I think the light is softer than people, is that?
I think it creates an undue, uh, more problem than you really probably, it can be done.
Okay.
But from the standpoint of the issue and the significance of it, it's, I would think it's more than you need to do.
I appreciate the explanation, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, no further comment. We have a motion and a second. Uh, no need to take a roll call vote. We'll vote. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Uh, uh, motion passes six one.
The public hearing is set for August twenty-first. Okay, moving on to item number ten B. It's Development and Administrative Services Redevelopment Division, Land Development Code text amendment, amend Article five, location of accessory uses and structures in outdoor seating. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, amending section five point three point B point two point B and five point three point C point seventeen, to allow for outdoor seating in certain required yards and to permit umbrella tables, open walled shade structures and other amenities associated with outdoor seating areas. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Gilliland. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission? Okay. And do we have first reading? So, uh, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
The public hearing is set for August twenty-first. Moving on to item number ten C. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, First Amendment to Daytona North Sam's Club Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the Daytona North Sam's Club Plan District Agreement, approving an amended sign plan, authorizing six electronic message center EMC signs for the limited purpose of displaying digital gas prices and reducing the total area and quantity of wall signs for the planned district. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a second from Commissioner Reed. All right, do we have any questions or comments on this? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
The public hearing is set for August twenty-first. Moving on to item number ten D. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, DME Sports Voluntary Annexation. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance annexing into the City of Daytona Beach, zero point forty-seven plus or minus acres of property located on the south side of Bellevue Avenue, adjacent to the Daytona Beach International Airport at twenty-five oh seven Bellevue Avenue, redefining the territorial boundaries of the City of Daytona Beach to include the property, redesignating the boundaries of Zone Four of the City of Daytona Beach to include the property. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Um, we have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Henry. Do we have any comments? Uh, okay. All those years, I didn't know that wasn't in this city. Do we have any other comments? Terms of, this is county. Any additional comments? Nope, all right. Uh, motion carries, well, we have a motion and a second. Let's have a vote. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for August twenty-first. Moving on to item number ten E. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, DME Sports Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance adopting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter one sixty-three point three one eight seven Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of zero point forty-seven plus or minus acres of property located on the south side of the Bellevue Avenue across from the Daytona Beach International Airport at twenty-five oh seven Bellevue Avenue, from Volusia County Activity Center to city mixed use, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Let me take a motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Delgado. Um, okay. All, um, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for August twenty-first. Moving on to item number ten F. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, DME Sports First Amendment to the DME Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the DME Plan District Agreement to add zero point forty-seven plus or minus acres of property located on the south side of Bellevue Avenue across from the Daytona Beach International Airport at twenty-five oh seven Bellevue Avenue, to develop a stormwater retention pond and to increase the number of student housing units for the development. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, um, we have a motion from Commissioner Traeger. We'll take a second from Commissioner Delgado. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for August twenty-first. Moving on to item number ten G. It is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Sanctuary Daytona, rezoning to Plan Development General PDG. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to resume twenty-two point seven plus or minus acres of property generally located on the north side of LPGA Boulevard and west of Grand Preserve Way, from Volusia County R four Urban Single Family Residential to PDG Plan Development General District, authorizing the Sanctuary Daytona Plan District Agreement with Indigo Development LLC and Emerson International, Inc., to allow for the development of a three hundred and thirty-six unit multifamily complex, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Plan District Agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
I do have Ms. Jessica Leavitt-Gow, from Emerson International, on behalf of the applicant, for any questions.
I'm sorry, uh, gotten a lot of calls and emails about this one, about the height, of this.
You've gotten anything since the revisions? Because I, I got a lot. We all got surveys.
Yeah, I got, I got, yes, I got it.
Because I haven't gotten anything since the revisions.
No, I, I spoke with, uh, the city manager and, um, on yesterday, and deputy city manager, and so I am concerned about the height. Um, I think that you did a good job of going back and, um, addressing some of the concerns of the residents. But the, the height is still an issue for me. Um, that's the sixty, it's at sixty, what?
Yeah, Dennis Rosen, Planning Director for the city, they did request a height of sixty feet maximum for the apartment buildings. Um, the, um, what we try to do is take a look at what the, the normal height would be, uh, for a, a standard zoning district. In this case, it would be an MFR twenty for a multifamily zoning district. Maximum height permitted would be a, a thirty-five foot apartment building. Uh, they're requesting a sixty foot, um, uh, maximum height for the apartment building. But they did also, and I, and I did wanna point out, uh, as, um, to, to accommodate the height, they did, um, um, modify their plan to provide an extra building setback. Normally, there'd be a building setback of twenty-five feet for that thirty-five foot building. Uh, in this case, they're requesting a max, or a minimum of hundred and twenty feet, uh, for that building. So the building is set further back from the property line, even though it is higher.
How much did you say the normal setback would be?
Uh, the normal setback would be twenty-five feet from the rear property line for that thirty-five foot building.
And what is it now?
Uh, they're requesting a hundred and twenty feet.
Okay.
It's, it's the height that I'm concerned about. And it is intrusive because it backs right up to the Grand Preserve community. Um, I'm not gonna support this tonight, um, because of that, and, and because I do feel the residents over there are correct in that it, it is intrusive for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna have some more questions in the, the next, and I'll be reaching out to residents. I will say, I, I have heard a little more, but I didn't hear as much as I heard prior to. But I do wanna reach out to the residents and wanna hear from them, uh, if, if they are out there, because I was opposed to this based on the height. Now, it's six feet, sixty, why do you need quite that much height? Are you, how many stories will it be?
Right, and for the record, Jessica Gow with Cobb Cole, one four nine South Bridget Avenue. Thank you for your comments. Um, at first, I wanna thank the city staff for working with us on this project as we respond to resident concerns. And we had two neighborhood meetings so that we could hear, make sure all their concerns were addressed, um, through our PD agreement. The height is a mix of, there's a mix of reasons why we decided on the sixty feet height. One is that we're preserving over fifty percent of the space for open space. Um, so we're clustering the development, making it taller so that there's more green space for residents, more areas to preserve wetlands and things like that. Um, and our second point was, in responding to the residents over the height concerns, uh, Dennis mentioned a little bit that the original setback would be twenty-five feet. And with that twenty-five foot setback, you could have a building that's thirty-five foot high. Um, one of the partners at the firm, Mark Watts, who was unable to attend tonight, actually drew up a really cute diagram for the planning board members, um, that showed the visual difference on a thirty-five foot building at the twenty-five foot setback and our sixty foot building at the one hundred and twenty foot setback, um, and how the thirty-five foot building at twenty-five feet, which is permitted by code, would actually be more intrusive on their view corridors than the sixty foot, um, high building. So our main concern is preserving open space and wetlands on the property and allowing for that open space. Um, and we've tried to address the citizen concerns by adding that increased setback over what the code requires.
Okay, what were some of the other adjustments that you made for the residents?
I was wondering, did you have a maximum number of floors, occupied floors that you would use?
We do, um, it's four occupied stories, so the occupied height is actually fifty, and that extra ten feet is decorative elements on the roofing.
So it's one story higher than, than, uh, five hundred east across the street?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's funny, you say that, that's twenty-five feet, you know, what are they squeezing two more in there, but it actually is just a single story?
Yeah. It is a single story, but it doesn't, it doesn't, five hundred east doesn't, doesn't butcher, uh, a residential neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
But, we, did you have any other, what other things did you do to accommodate the residents?
Absolutely.
What were some other things?
I'd say, so there were a few concerns, um, large concerns by residents, including the building height. Um, we included the setbacks to deal with that. Uh, one of their major concerns was adding an access to the Grand Preserve Way, and we have removed that access as a primary access to the development, and it is only an emergency access at this point. It will be gated and have signage saying that. Um, so the building height and access, uh, at the planning board, there was discussion of the dumpster location. That was also a concern. Um, we informed them that the dumpster would be screened with a wall on three sides and would have landscaping around it. Um, and it is a fully automatic compactor that will be emptied twice a week, so that should cut back on any concerns about odor emissions or things like that.
All right, I wanna thank you guys for the efforts that you've made. This has been a, kind of a process for you all, and you have worked to get to this point. I will be supporting it tonight with the hope of hearing from more residents between now and then, but I, I appreciate the effort that you've made.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think there was one other, wasn't there also an opportunity put out there for the Grand Preserve residents to go to a different Emerson project in Port Orange?
Yes, um, they do have a very similar project in Port Orange, and we actually showed pictures at planning board, and we will probably have those at second reading, um, showing the central water feature that will be present in this development too, and what the building types generally look like. Um, we did have a resident attend the second neighborhood meeting who said they actually went and visited the Port Orange site and was very pleased with the architecture and the setup there, so.
Thank you very much.
At the second reading, I would also like to see Mark's drawing to show me the difference between the twenty-five and the one twenty and the, um, the height.
I'd say I have it on hand, if I, if you would like to see it, I can pass it to you, but we'll absolutely make sure that it's on a presentation.
We can do it then, 'cause we wanna make it available for the citizens to view as well.
No problem. Absolutely, we'll have that information for you.
There was also other things, like, I actually kind of picked Mark's brain about this the other day, be, when I was talking about the integrated LPGA project that we continued for the fourth time tonight, I think. Um, but, you, a couple of things he mentioned was, uh, nicer fencing along the entryway, um, and then also a, a fence of the wetlands, and then there was also, the rear property line will actually have a fence that will prevent people from being able to kinda cut through the apartment complex into the neighborhood. There were, there were a number of things, and, you know, obviously, first reading, but I, I agree with you. I was very surprised that, that we've got petitions a couple of times, the first, you know, this was being, going through the public, you know, uh, public meetings. So.
Good.
And just to comment on the fencing, to clarify for the commission, um, there is a required fifteen foot buffer in the code, and we are expanding that to sixty foot along the rear property line of landscape buffer to provide, um, screening of view for the residents, and there will be a six foot fence, um, within that buffer to make sure that there is no trespassing on the other property. And then the eastern side of the property will also have a wrought iron decorative fence.
Okay, the eastern side is, okay, very good.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, comments? All right, nice job also tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six one.
Moving on to item number ten H. It's the Development and Administrative Services Leisure Services Department, Bi-October Fest twenty nineteen Private Property Master Plan Resolution. A resolution relating to the Bi-October Fest twenty nineteen Master Plan for the private property approved by Resolution nineteen one sixty-eight, approving certain additional activities as part of the master plan, subject to conditions, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Reed.
For the record, Commissioner Traeger has submitted the Form AB memorandum of voting For the record, Commissioner Trager has submitted the Form AB memorandum of voting conflict since.
All right. Uh, do we have any other comments?
Are these being voted on altogether as one? Even though, uh, there's a letter of objection from somebody who owns the land where the beachside auto parts is?
Was all voted on?
Two, one.
Mayor, Commissioner Jim Morris, Deputy City Manager. In regard to that one, Ms. Trager, the property that was objected to has been deleted from the application by the prop, the applicant. The, the same applicant does have some property that qualifies for parking. It's previously been licensed, that will be included, and that's what's part of your application. As it relates to the letter of objection, the property owned by that property owner who objected is the lessor, that property has been deleted from the request. So you are voting for the amended and reduced application, not the one that you heard about that didn't have authorization. We've thoroughly been through that with both the applicant as well as the correspondence from the property owner, which you have in your file tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If I might, Mayor, the other one was the Ocean Center. We've resolved differences with it and favorably.
Okay, very good, okay. Uh, do we have any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
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 Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven-zero.
Six-zero.
Six, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, she was abstaining.
Is there a final item on the?
All right, yeah, this time we will, uh, commence with commission comments. Uh.
Mayor?
Commissioner Delgado is first.
Excuse me, Mayor, if, if I may interrupt for just a second. I wanna go back, uh, to item ten A, it was the, uh, lighting issue that we had. That was all the different motions.
Yes.
Um, some of those issues are actually addressed in your code. I had a moment while we were, uh, moving forward to look at that. And I, I think both of your issues are actually addressed already in the code. Under your, under the code, um, those uses are required to distinguish their lights by ten PM. So we already have it in there. And in addition, there's a, um, restriction to two-foot candles, whatever that is, I don't know. There must be a measure, uh, mechanism for that. Uh, but you, they can't exceed two-foot candles from the edge of pavement. So we have both those issues handled in the general restrictions in your code. So we'll bring that back next time, and you can vote it, um, as you wish. But we will not need to add the ten, the ten PM curfew.
Oh, okay, great. Thanks, it's nice to have that, that research there. You don't have to go back into a law library, just look it right up online, technology, huh? Yeah, okay, um, Commissioner Delgado?
Thank you. Couple of things I, I wanted to talk about was the, the First Step Shelter and some of the stuff that's been, uh, going on there. You know, I, I understand that we're moving along rapidly with the physical plant. And, um, I, I talked with, uh, Mr. Chisholm at lunch today, and he said that, uh, the physical plant is coming along quite well, and that some people had seen it and were, uh, very impressed by what had actually been taking shape. So that's good. I remain a little bit concerned about, um, our relationship with the First Step Shelter Board and how that's coming along. Um, I haven't attended the meeting, the, and I've, but yet I read the commentary in the paper and the opinions. And so, um, I'm worried about the schism there, the perceived schism. So I, I hope that, that there doesn't become kind of any political infighting or anything that detracts from completing what we've all devoted many, many years to doing, most of you more than I have, to trying to get this program off the ground. We're so close to the finish line, and I'm just worried that, um, you know, we're gonna stagger before we get there and stumble over really what, to me, seems like just a lot of, uh, you know, ego and, um, misunderstandings and difficulty communicating, probably compounded by the sunshine law requirements. But, um, I'm a little bit concerned about that. I, I don't know who else shares that concern, but I, I mean, we're so close to seeing this through to fruition. Um, you know, I, I think candidly, part of the issue is that the First Step Shelter Board doesn't have the resources we have as city commissioners. They don't have dedicated staff, they don't have an army of people who can get everything they need done. They don't have staff putting together presentations and running down things. And, you know, if they have a question, they don't have someone who can find the answer in three minutes for them. So, I mean, they're, they're asked to do a difficult job without the full scope of resources that we as a city have. And I don't know if it, if we need to kind of lend them some of our horsepower for a little bit. I don't know what, you know, I don't know what we can do to help. But I certainly don't like the perception that we're somehow at odds with them, because we're all moving towards the same goal. I mean, it's, it's a very worthy goal, it's a goal we've committed a ton of time, energy, and money to. Um, and so I think, you know, we're all united in that front. So when I see or perceive that there's a schism, that, that does concern me. And I don't want the, the message to get out there that we're not moving this along in the right way. Um, you know, I, I don't know what we can do to help and what we need to do to fix that. Um, I don't know if there really is a problem that needs fixing, or if it's just one of perception, or maybe I'm misperceiving things. But I, for one, would be completely in favor of, you know, opening up our city resources and our, particularly our wonderful staff, to helping the First Step Shelter Board execute on what they need to execute on, so that we can have things up and off the ground. Um, I think we're gonna be, uh, full to capacity very quickly. I think it's gonna be a, um, you know, a, a success in terms of it's gonna be fully occupied and very quickly. And so, you know, I, I wanna make sure that we're, we, we've planned for success and that we're ready when the, when the doors open to be inundated with, you know, the capacity. Uh, you know, the, bringing in other cities and other towns and making sure there's adequate representation and proportional representation and all that, those kind of policy things are things that I think we as a city commission need to have a hand in. But, um, you know, we need to help the First Step Shelter Board put those into a final plan and get a, an operational plan from Catholic Charities that we will have kind of the software to the operational hardware. So that's, that's my, my comment and my concern there. I don't know where the rest of the commission is on that. I know we've talked before about having some contingency plans. So hopefully, you know, we still have that. I, I didn't see, I know we're probably gonna be talking a lot about Beach Street, just, I kind of, I wanted to.
Wait, before you go on, let, let me try to help you with that and help address it so we can talk about it, and then you come back to your other.
Sure, absolutely.
I, I think, uh, first and foremost, I wanna say that I think our staff has done, uh, an exceptional job of trying to work to help First Step Shelter Board do its job. Second thing I wanna say is I think that the decisions that were made by the city manager as it related to, uh, staff no longer working in the capacity of Dr. Durham, uh, was appropriate, an appropriate decision in response based on the way things were going. The city has given an enormous amount of resources and continues to give an enormous amount of resources that really are incalculable, can't be calculated. Uh, the, the willingness to, uh, essentially, uh, assign a, a lieutenant to work with First Step Shelter Board is not even a part of the four-hundred-thousand-dollar commitment that we're making. Uh, and I could go on and on, the fact that Mr. Jagger devotes an enormous amount of time, and we know that lawyers aren't cheap, to help in the First Step Shelter Board. Um, and so, I wanna say this, and, you know, I've thought about writing an editorial, um, about this. First of all, I think that the board is now, is, is gonna move forward. And we got things in place, all of the necessary, uh, assignments have been turned over to Catholic charities, charities to empower them to, to do the things that need to be done. The first thing I wanna say is that when Dr. Durham returned to work with the board, it's important to note that the board requested that Dr. Durham come back and help with the board. There was a lot made about a so-called or an alleged, uh, secret meeting. Well, we asked to have Dr. Durham because we didn't have a executive director. So we asked that he be allowed to assist us in our work. So quite naturally, Dr. Durham works for the city and he is trying to help the board. So quite naturally, there would be the appearance that he's trying to protect the, the city, uh, when in reality, he's trying to push forward a project that I say no one has done more work than he's done to bring to fruition. And I, when I say no one, I mean no one has done more from top to bottom than he's done to try to make it happen. So, we asked for his help, then when we received his help as a board, uh, at a certain point in time, that help was lamented, really because of a, a, a sort of a misunderstanding. And so a lot of what's going on with First Step, uh, is a lot of, uh, there's a large deal of misunderstanding and taking things out of context. Everyone who works on the board, with the exception of Mr. Pinagio, wears two hats. I've never dealt with an issue that was more convoluted and, uh, problematic as an elected person than this one because of that nature. So all the board members wear the hat of their city, and then they wear the hat of being on a board, that they don't have a building. So to their credit, there are things that, you know, you've been building a building for two, three years, and they still don't have it, and so that is, is problematic. And so it's a, it's a, it's a, and I know I'm going a long way to describe some things. It's not an easy situation, but it's nowhere near, uh, out of control or, uh, problematic as the number of, uh, reports that we receive in the paper. Uh, and that's not to the paper's discredit. We've said things and things happen, and people wanna read about it, they're obligated to report on it. And I have tried to make myself available to them when things have transpired. So I say all of that to say that, um, I, I think the board is now, it's better for the board actually not to have Dr. Durham. And I say that not because they don't need his expertise and his skill set, but because when he makes a decision that an executive director might make in helping, he's then tied in and pigeonholed, oh, that's the city holding us up again. The recent consternation or problem that emerged was an issue that, and I confessed and said, you know, I apologize if you thought this was inappropriate. Dr. Durham was serving in the role or the capacity as what would be an executive director. Mr. Chisholm was out of town on vacation. Had nothing to do with any of the decisions that were made, or even, to my knowledge, with what was the decision that Dr. Durham made. He called me because the person who's serving as the executive director, uh, the volunteer, offered her name as a person that would help to bridge the gap for an extended amount of time. She offered her name, Dr. Durham says, well, she's offered her name. I have been, uh, asked by the board at a meeting that you were not at, Mayor, I wasn't present, to, uh, advertise for a permanent board member. This was just a few days before the next meeting. So he asked, I said, well, what are your thoughts on, um, waiting and asking the board if they would like to allow her to serve as executive director and, and take on a little more responsibility for, I wouldn't call it a nominal fee, but a fee? Um, and I said, well, let's just let the board make a decision and give, give them the decision. But as soon as he made that suggestion in the meeting, the board, some members felt as though it was the city interjecting. Can't have it both ways. The man is doing a job that you're asking him to do, uh, really with a limited amount of, uh, inflection from the manager, to my knowledge. And now you do have staff, and, and has to meet with the board, meet with whoever our executive director is. Because, listen, we're, we're offering a lieutenant. So many things that the city's offering to try to support and make sure that this project moves forward. So, uh, I, I, to make a long story short, I believe that the board has to, it's good for the board not to have all of the resources of the city. Because if we don't have the resources of the city, then whatever the work is that's required to be done, we have to do it. And we have to find a way to make it happen. And therefore, this perception that the city is just hell-bent on controlling is, has to go away. Because what the city has been primarily hell-bent on is building the building, which is what we were responsible for, which was what the manager and staff were charged with. Build the building, the county wouldn't give it to First Step. Because if we had it our way, we would've been able to give it to someone else and let them build it and we not be involved. But if the city had refused to take on, um, the issue, if we refused to do it, it never would've transpired, as we all know. So I think it is best, and I think that, uh, First Step Shelter is, is in, in motion. Of course, you have other things that have transpired as it relates to Flagler County coming in. Those are decisions that will be made, and I think the city should have a, a stake in it. But I, I, I think by all means, it's something that we, we need to consider as I've gone on public record, uh, as stating, that those are things that we need to consider. But some of the inflammatory, and, 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 of course, we had another board member who has stated that he may possibly resign if certain decisions are made. You know, and that is possible, but that's the nature of politics and people being frustrated with decisions that may not be made in a way that they believe them to be, uh, in their best interest. Either way, we're gonna move full steam ahead. The other thing I wanna add is that this, this board, as you suggested, asked our manager and staff to have a contingency plan, rightfully so. And so I think he has done, only done his job, has only done what we've asked, which is to have a contingency plan in place should this board fail to be able to deliver when it's time to open. I think our staff is in a position where they're knowledgeable enough and know, they feel confident that they could do it. I'm of the mind that the board should continue, and I believe that the board will be able to deliver with the assistance of Catholic charities, a project that we all can be proud of and that we all can be engaged in. Along the way, you will lose some warriors. And I refer to Joe Forte as a warrior and a guy who I hold in high esteem and great respect. But we're gonna continue to persevere and push forward, and I think it'll happen. Uh, and if I have misstated or misrepresented anything, I've done it to the best of my ability to try to bring to light what I would otherwise have said in an editorial, um, and hopefully spend less time by saying it this way. Anything else? Uh, any other questions? Because I do understand, and I do believe that this commission, we've invested a lot. And we have a lot on the line. No one politically or financially, uh, has invested more than we have. And it's easy to make a soundbite in a newspaper, but I think it's best for the posterity and future of the board, for all of us to be congenial and try to make remarks that are gonna, at the end of the day, lead to the success of the board. I will say this, and this is my last remark. The board has asked for a, a joint meeting between them and us because they too do not wanna be perpetually frustrated, uh, by what they perceive as some misunderstandings. Um, and I leave that to this board. Initially, I thought that not to be a good idea, um, but I defer to their desire to have that. And I leave that to you all to make a decision as to whether you wanna do that now or sometime in the, uh, near future. And that's, that concludes my remarks. Yes, any other comments on this before we go back to Commissioner Delgado?
I think Commissioner Delgado is referring to policy more so, if I'm correct, not the story of the building. I'd like to address the building itself, right? Can I do that, or should I wait?
No, you can do that, we're, we're on this topic.
All right, so I actually, uh, made a commitment to start going to the building on a weekly basis because I wanted to see what the progress was. I, I've been saying very publicly that I believe we will complete the project and then turn it over in a timely fashion. I will say that when I went there Tuesday, and I was there at about one o'clock, from Tuesday one o'clock to the pictures today, there's a difference in a twenty-four-hour time period, which I find fascinating. So do I believe that the next steps move on fantastically well? Yes, I walked in there, everybody was highly motivated, they were getting the job done, they were moving. And so I have every confidence that, um, as we move forward, we will meet our part of the goal. So, but I think that everybody supports that, and I think that we should go out there at some point. But I wanna go on a weekly basis because I actually wanna see what's going on.
Okay, farewell.
Mayor, can I make one comment as well?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, there was another, uh, piece of that article that, you know, we had clarified at last meeting, and Aaron, I apologize, you weren't here, but there's not going to be a safe zone on that property. That would be a disaster for the city Daytona Beach if we decided to allow a tent city out there. There will be an intake area for people that are waiting to get into the facility. You know, you will not get a safe, if anybody wants to tend a safe zone, it's five miles west of I-95, is only doing it because they plan on making a permanent residence.
Can I ask?
Well, well, let's, let's hold up on that because the, the board, we, there's a difference between a safe zone because we, First Step has a desire to have within their control, and this has been my position, the capacity to operate something that allows for folks to be on that property but not be inside the building.
Absolutely.
Uh, and so you don't support that.
That is a terrible thing for the city. We will attract people from all over central Florida.
It's not, it's, it's not.
To give them a permanent place to live in the woods west of ninety-five is a terrible idea.
I think you're, it's not what, what they're saying. When you say a safe zone, and maybe you might wanna sh, share with them what it means. It enables folks to come onto the premise, and they have to have the same rules that folks have in any other area in our city where they will have to leave by a certain time. It's not a ma, and this would be something that's operated not by us, but by First Step. So in other words, it's within the confines of the First Step Shelter property that we will lease to them. And it is my opinion that we do not have the authority to say to them as a board that you can't operate that. They'd have to be able to operate, that's where, that's a policy decision that they're making as to how the shelter will best suit and meet the needs of the people who are homeless in our community.
Mr. Mayor? I totally disagree, and I think it's outside the scope of the agreement. The agreement is for them to run a shelter. An intake area makes sense for people that are not of the right mindset to enter the shelter, that need a place to dry out. To, to basically say, hey, anybody in central Florida, you wanna go live permanently in the woods? No, that is, a safe zone is, we have a safe zone, the police chief got up here and explained to us, nobody uses it. There's bathrooms, there's running water, you know, they can be there, you know, you know.
That's not what they're asking, no.
And then we need to stop.
Something where people can live in the woods, but.
And we need to stop calling it a safe zone. A safe zone is, is, there's no rules, you show up and you can sleep there at night and you leave in the morning.
Uh, and that's why we do wanna stop calling it a safe zone because that's a term that is loaded with, uh, innuendos and, and, that, with things that says that you can't create rules.
We need, we need a definition of what it is.
Explain to them that you can create rules so that he.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Let me, let me, let me just, there's a lot made of safe zones, and there was a time when we needed a safe zone.
We have one.
And we have.
We had one for years.
And we have one.
And let me just explain, the reason we have to, we needed one at that time, the, there's a court case down in South Florida that said, if you didn't have a place, if you were gonna arrest somebody that was a homeless, and you were gonna propose to take him to a jail, you had to have another alternative. And that is the creation of a safe zone. That's what they did, and we did it, and we, that, that, so this city was compliant with the law. That's what they did. And we did it, and we, that, that, so this city was compliant with the law, and anytime we dealt with that population. We don't have to have a safe zone now because we have a shelter. The shelter su- will serve that purpose as the alternative. And you don't have to call it a safe zone because it's a shelter. And that's the purpose of what we're trying to achieve. It doesn't require, we're not required to have a safe zone as it relates as, rather relates to the previous litigation in South Florida.
Yeah, I would agree with what the manager said, that, the distinction, what makes it a safe zone under the Pottinger case and, and, uh, uh, is the fact that it's a place where people would go when they're subject to arrest for these life-sustaining offenses on public property, um, where, where they can stay for some period of time, uh, where there's no programming requirements. And so that's all a safe zone is. It could be inside, it could be outside, um, so it's not.
Where there's no programming requirement.
That's the key, is that there's no, no programming.
In order to come into First Step, it is, there's a programming requirement.
Correct.
So if a person comes there and they don't want to, uh, uh, go into a program, we have to have a place where they can reasonably be for a small amount of time. And so, say, First Step will manage that, not the city of Daytona Beach.
That needs to be an amendment to the agreement between the city and the board to expand it from being the shelter to being something that's more inclusive. And I want to see extremely strict rules on what would be allowed out there to make sure that it is not a safe zone. You know, because I'm telling you, we will end up being flooded if we end up saying, hey, come on out to Daytona and live on the 600-acre piece of property, you know, that the city owns out, you know, in the middle of nowhere. Because, trust me, there's a lot of people that, that would take advantage of that.
I, I concur with that, and trust me, the first thing I've said is this, and I, and it, one, that the city is not going to own a safe zone that the rest of the county can dump people into or the rest of the state. And whatever area this is, and I don't want to call it a safe zone, find some other language. First Step has to be responsible for it as a part of the agreement with Catholic charities.
It's like a waiting area.
So it's like a waiting area, or it's like an area that you can stay to. You can stay at for 18 hours or whatever. If you come in, you say, I'm not gonna have services. But we, they create the rules, and yes, our staff can work with them, our attorney, to make sure that the rules are something that's acceptable to us as it relates to the lease. Because I understand that that's a part, because on, on First Step's side, and I, I said this in the meeting yesterday, the other day, there was a meeting between the First Step Board, uh, so city staff, uh, Assistant Deputy Chief, uh, Deputy or Chief, uh, Drew Driscoll, myself and the board member, as a representative, representing the board, my comment was that the board would like to request that there be an amendment to the agreement as it, as it relates to the lease, that it would include a space for First Step to be able to operate a place for those folks that do not want to have services. Which keeps us all in compliance with this, I don't want to call it Pottinger, but, but doesn't it keep us in compliance?
Keep in mind, Pottinger is based on the Eighth Amendment, so you can't criminalize the act of being homeless. And so, uh, and that, and, and further, you can't require people to go through programming that don't wish to, uh, as part of the Eighth Amendment restrictions. So, um, you can call it an Eighth Amendment zone if you'd like, but that's what we're talking about.
But the bottom line is, Commissioner, and I agree with you, we, we have to protect ourselves to make sure that it cannot become anything like that. But the first way we protect ourselves is that we're not responsible for it. It's a part of the shelter. And it's a part of the board's ob- obligation to operate it in a way that is successful and congruent with the rest of our rules and laws we have.
And I'm in agreement that an intake area is needed, you know, because there are going to be people who aren't ready to enter a program. I honestly, I, I can't imagine right, right now, I just, I can't think of any way you could structure this and explain it to me where somebody could come and there'd be no programming and them having no intention of entering programming and us allowing them to live on that 600-acre piece of property.
They're not living on it. They could stay there for a certain amount of time, not even a day, 12 hours, they, and then they have to leave. There are rules, and they have to follow the rules or they have to leave. And that's what we have to remember that.
And they love to come back the next day.
Even in a safe zone, you can create rules. And that's why ours is, is not running over with people, because there are rules there that people don't want to comply to. And we should have to have the same thing here.
Could the person come back the next day?
Well, I, I mean.
If they're waiting for a spot, I mean, I think there's got to be a relationship between the number of spaces available and like the discharge rate. I mean, if six spots are becoming available, maybe you have eight, nine people there.
That makes sense.
I mean, I, I imagine that's the plan. This is a, my understanding of it, and in, and I think Pinellas uses a, an escalating model where you kind of work your way up. But there are going to be maybe 10 people who show up for five spots, and they may have to wait until other people graduate out or come out. Um, and as long as I, my sense is as long as they're there for that purpose.
I don't think that's what this is for.
There, there.
That's not what this space is for.
Not for, not sobering up until some spot.
Sobering up, this is not for that. It is for a person who comes there and they say, I don't want your services, I don't want to.
Okay.
But I want to be able to go out and, you know, maybe do what I want to do, but I don't want your services, so. Uh, but I want to be homeless. Well, you can be there for 12 hours, and then you gotta keep it moving.
But there is also a space for people who want to, who need to sober up while they wait to.
That, that, yeah, that's a, that's within the facility, and that's for them to have a holding area for people who want services. That's different. The person who wants services, we're gonna find a way to get you in here, whether you're drunk or whether you're drugged out. We're gonna he- have, try to dry you out until we can move you into an area.
I thought all those people started in one place. They came in, and then they made that decision once they'd been sobered up and hydrated and all that, if they were gonna participate. So, I mean, I, I, I probably just need clarification on that point from, from the, from the First Step Shelter program.
Uh, you're, that's the way it operates in Pinellas, what you described, and, uh, First Step here has a different concept than, uh, I, I think we just got to wait and see if it works.
Well, we got to wait and see what their proposed amendment to the lease says, you know, the agreement, because having, you know, an intake area makes, is, is part of the programming, is part of, you know, people getting into the shelter and for, you know, partaking of the services that are, that are, you know, are available. You know, this is nothing to do with that. This is a completely different step. It's somebody who has no intention of ever getting off the street. It's just giving them a place to hang out for some period of time, and it, I mean, it sure sounds like a safe zone to me.
Don't you think there should be a place if someone comes and they, they want to get in, and it may be a day or two before a spot can open, that they should be able to stay someplace?
I do, I, I think that's fine. You know, if there, if it, if there are 45 people in the, in the program, and there's not a bed available, and they've, like, can I stay here until there's a bed available? You know, that's something that I would find reasonable.
Good, I, yeah.
You can come here for 12 hours a day, every day, you're, you know, for the rest of your life? No, that's not something that I think we want to do.
I agree with Commissioner Gilliland on this, that, but it's based on the definition he just gave, which was somebody who says they don't want programming, and they're still staying there. If that is the distinction, if you're telling me you don't want programming, you're not waiting for programming, and you still want to stay here, then I support you on that. You should not be able to do that. But the idea that you cannot just stay there.
Stay out there at all, even if they don't want programming?
No.
They shouldn't be able to.
No, I don't believe that.
Well, I think there should be a limited time if they don't want programming.
People who are coming there, they're coming there because they made a choice, they want some help. Now, if it takes a day or two to get in, fine, because their choice is, I need some help with this, I want something. But people just saying, just disregarding, saying, we're not interested, but we're going to be here anyway, yeah, I have a problem with that also.
Mr. Mayor, most of, most of the people that are going to be coming there are going to be delivered by a police department. Almost all of them. You may have a few that are homeless and make it there otherwise. But the majority of these people are going to be through the system of, of, they're violating some law in some, some city. So I, I would think that's probably going to be the majority of that population, particularly initially. Now, it may graduate into other things. But, uh, as long as they're prepared to deal with that, I think that's, um, that's something you got to look at their policies and their procedures.
As long as they're prepared to deal with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I don't, I think we should allow them to operate that facility in the way we've assigned it off to them to operate it. That is the decision that that board is making. As long as they don't turn them over to our police and expect us to manage them, and it's within the parameters of their facility, let's expect them to make it in a way that is something that we can live with, it's not ideal for us. But we got to allow them to run the facility.
Whatever happens inside the facility, absolutely. You know, it's the, what happens outside the facility that I'm taking issue with.
Well, this is not outside the facility, what I'm describing. What I'm describing is a part, no, it's not. It's part of the, you mean in the building?
Yeah.
Right, that's the facility.
All right. Well, I, I, I'm telling you where they are, and if we reach an impasse because of it, you know, I'm, I, I support their position that they should have the ability to run it, but I understand, I work for two different people in this situation.
But let me say one thing.
Work with you all, and I work for them.
If, if I may, Mayor.
Yeah.
My advice to the First Step Shelter Board and to you as the landowner is that you should not allow, um, persons to come and either mill on the property or, or not go through some intake procedure. You need an intake procedure to protect persons within the facility, uh, from violent folks. So, um, you really shouldn't, from a liability standpoint, allow people to come and not go through some sort of minimal background check, even if they don't want programming.
But that is all a part of what this would do.
That, policies have to be established to that.
Part of the policies that we would, that the First Step Board would have to have.
Right.
So you don't just walk up onto the property and you just decide, I'm gonna stay here because I want to live here and I'm gonna bring my tent. We, you, you, they create a strict set of rules, and these are the rules for you to even be here for this amount of time.
They want to operate a homeless refuge out there that's not a shelter, then, and I'm, I, I can't think of a better word right now. Um, and they want to have policies and procedures, they want to run by us because they think that it's a good idea, then let's write them up and let's, let's take a look at them. You know, saying that somebody, like our safe zone, you just show up and you, you sleep and you go, you leave, you know, when, when the sun comes up. You know, this saying that you're going to have a criminal background check to be able to spend time there with no programming is a different little take on this than what we were talking about earlier. So, you know, but it needs to be, it needs to have a, a structure to it. And I totally agree with the idea of there being something outside of the building that is an intake area, um, something that's a waiting area for people that aren't, you know, the beds are full, you know, and they want to get help, you know, I don't want to turn them out. But I do not want to get in a situation where this is a situ- where, where somebody is going to show up and say, I don't want any help. I just want to, I just want to stay here, and I'll be here X number of hours a day, you know. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, hitchhike my way down ISB and get, dig, dig through some dumpsters to get some food or whatever, and then make my way back there tonight. I don't want that on that property. I do not think that's a good idea. I don't think the people that are in the program, that are in the building, you know, that are looking outside and seeing a zero-structure situation with people that are laughing and smoking cigarettes and, and goofing off, and this guy's struggling to like, you know, with his addiction, that's a terrible thing. He's going to walk right over to the other area and say, I'd rather hang out here.
And that's why they don't want it at the front door of the, of the shelter. Remember, and I, I, this is to be managed by Catholic charities as a part of the shelter. And as of today, and, and during the next meeting, they have to, Catholic charities is going to have, and this is, is going to have to bring back a proposal to say, this is how much it will cost for us to manage that to add to what we're already doing. So I don't foresee the shelter opening doing this. I see that as being something down the line when it can afford to, to maybe afford to do that. But I don't know that. I have to meet with the rest of the board, and Catholic charities has to make a presentation and say, this is what it will cost for us to manage this space and these people who you, who you deem as being outside of the confines of the shelter, and you want us to manage.
Mr. Mayor.
So, I, I mean, I, I understand y'all's sentiment.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I think there's a, um, there's a video that's on YouTube that Pinellas, Pinellas County did. That video, they describe their shelter, they describe every part of how, how their system works. And all of, all of our discussion is about, you know, intake and, and the processing and what, what happens. I think it's valuable, particularly for anyone on that shelter board, to look and see what they've done somewhat where else. And that, that clip, they explain exactly not only how the intake works, but they, how the system works. You know, how, how, how a person comes in and what, what steps they take to, to progress through the system and ultimately, you know, go out the other side. Uh, I think that's worthwhile taking a look at it, and I'll be happy to get it and forward it to you.
Forward it to me, and I'll share it with the rest of the board members.
I'd like to see it too.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to ask something, Mr. Mayor. Um, one, uh, since a few of us are so concerned about people staying there that don't want services, and although, from what I just understood, the safe zone, I'm sorry, the shelter.
Eighth Amendment, the space.
Well, the shelter itself makes us part of the compliance, so we wouldn't have to necessarily have a safe zone any longer. But perhaps we should consider keeping the safe zone for those who don't want any services, who aren't really using it anyway. And then they couldn't go out there because we already got someplace else for those to go who don't want to go there. Then my other point was, um, I know we mentioned a while back, and you just mentioned it tonight, that perhaps the two boards need to get together. And I would like that. I would, I would like for us to, to try to, um, uh, come to some conclusions together instead of the back and forth, and just kind of see where we stand and make sure we understand where we are, uh, before we get that, that operation underway.
I, I don't, this, I'm not, uh, out of concurrence with that.
What do you think is most advantageous? Because you said now or at a later date, is it?
Uh, well, we would have to arrange it, I, I think, uh, the sooner the better. There's a lot of things that have to be, uh, decided on, and I think that it gives us, let's just give, uh, them enough time to establish something that they might believe that we could live with as it relates to that space. Because for them, that space is important because we, we did promote this as a Pottinger compliant facility, but it's really not Pottinger compliant all by itself. Because Pottinger compliance means that you have someplace for people to go if they say they don't want services.
What are you complaining about?
So we, we do say that.
Yeah.
I mean, and we said that when we promoted this to the rest of the community and the rest of the county.
Remember, the original Pottinger was you were allowed to sleep under a highway overpass with, with no bathroom and no.
And, and trust me, my feeling about this type of space is not much better than that.
But that, I mean, we are, we, we don't have any Pottinger issues, and we're not going to have Pottinger issues. Um, you know, but we just. We the city of Daytona Beach. You know, our, our, out of Bellevue Extension in Clyde Norris, that's, that, that meets the requirement. It exceeds the requirement.
Okay, but we didn't promote this. We promoted this as a Pottinger compliant facility. So just like, I can't allow Commissioner Trademark to simply say, well, we don't have this issue. Well, now we're saying that Daytona Beach, we don't have Pottinger issue anymore. But everybody else is saying that this facility was built to be Pottinger compliant. So I mean, I, I gotta try to hold it as a completely Pottinger compliant place.
But.
That's what we said.
So our Pot, we are Pottinger compliant because if somebody, if a police officer arrests somebody in Riverfront Park sleeping tonight and doesn't want to go to jail, they can take them to the safe zone, and that person can sleep there.
Okay.
That, so we are Pottinger compliant today, and have been for years.
The city of Daytona Beach is Pottinger compliant?
Yes.
But remember that we sold this commit, we got the rest of the community, including the county, to be agreeable to this because it was a Pottinger compliant facility in and of itself, not because Daytona Beach is Pottinger compliant.
I, I don't recall selling it in that way. To me, this was a way to help get homeless people assistance that, that need it where there, where currently is little or none.
Well, I, I think that, uh, when we went, when I spoke to the county at the county meeting, I certainly used that language. It was certainly a language that's been used that this would be a Pottinger compliant facility.
So we're taking on the load of being Pottinger compliant for all of the cities?
We are not taking it on. I think what we are doing is we're saying that First Step Shelter is taking it on. And that's where we have to remember that they have to own the people, it, whatever goes on at that facility, First Step owns it. We don't own it. We didn't want to own it, we don't own it. Let First Step own it.
Why can't every city have their own Pottinger compliant area? And then we have our First Shep- Step Shelter. This is Daytona's Pottinger compliant. This is Deltona's. This is Port Orange's and Holly Hills. I, 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 I'm uncomfortable taking on the load because it's, it's really, ultimately, it's still going to fall back on us. And I can tell you what, it's still going to be a burden to our police department. I, I mean, I just feel that, that's really how I feel, like, it's still going to be a burden. At some point, something is going to happen. At some point, something is gonna happen and we're gonna take that load on.
That, that.
And not only that, I, I also feel as though with us, um, having this Eighth Amendment joint.
Expecting?
This Eighth Amendment place, I mean, are, are we expecting the people to come out there to, to, to just be doing the right things or are we having a very close access for drugs and stuff for the people that 10, 15 feet away that's trying to get better with their lives? You know, I, I agree with you. I'm thinking, if, if I'm a drug addict and you got drugs 15 feet away and there's no drugs in here, I wanna go out 15 feet to get the drugs. But if, and come back inside. But if, if I don't have access to that, you know, if it's further away from me and I don't have access to it, then it, it becomes different. It, it's different, I, I can't get to it. Now, that might be me being a little bit naive, but I'm just, I'm just thinking it's gonna put some more pressure on, on, on the police department and all our resources. I'm telling you, Daytona's resources are going to, by the way this sounds, this is gonna be, it's, it's gonna infringe upon our resources. We gonna take some load from this, we, we gonna take a hit from this.
Well, we're already taking some load.
I, I meant more of a hit.
Well, we're taking a load by, by.
A bigger load.
Okay. Okay, I, I defer. But you, does everyone understand where I am and what, what, where my logic is and position I'm in and what I'm stating? So I understand you all's sentiments, let's get together and meet and see if they can put something together that may be palatable, it doesn't sound like it's gonna be palatable to you all. But, but I do wanna remind us that, that we, we, they are our partner. And so, you know, and I, and I remind them, nobody reminds them more than me that, that nobody's done more than we have. And nobody reminds them more than me that, that when they decide that they don't have any regard for our base account here at the city, because there's been a number of occasions where I felt like there was a complete disregard for the expenditures that we've made and I stand up for us. Tonight, I'm trying to stand up for them, but I think you all have to hear from them and they have to present something that you can accept. If not, I hate to say this, but I do feel that we run the risk of having a major problem if we can't get past this hurdle. We have to get past this hurdle. Uh, and I, I just, you know, so this, this is a hurdle that, so we need to meet sooner than later so that we can get past it.
When is your, your.
The next board meeting is on the 19th, um, and so, um, are there five Wednesdays in this month or so? No?
Think so. Just had five in the last month.
Has not. So I, I mean, we need to figure a way that we can get together. How about we just start immediately, because the board has already asked for a meeting, asking for dates that we can all meet to try to bring this to, uh, bring us together.
Can, can I request something at this joint meeting? Could we have an agenda, please, of, like, if it's 10 items that we knock out, 10 items?
10 will be a little bit long, so how about three or four?
That's fine, but.
I'll create an agenda for the city manager.
Yeah, early so we can research and do what we need to do, thanks.
And any, any, I'll take, you guys can send us any points that you may have.
Okay.
And he and I will confer and create an agenda. That sound good? Alright.
Date?
Well, we don't know the date, we'll have to start on, working on that tomorrow. And I'll.
Why don't we shoot for next Wednesday, 'cause it's an open date for us.
Next Wednesday is, uh, so, uh.
14.
Yeah, I already set up a meeting for next Wednesday, but that's okay, I can do that, I'll eliminate that. Ms. Moten, that's your meeting, but that maybe, maybe have to change. Okay, um, so we'll, can we all meet next Wednesday and then we'll see if they can meet? Make it later in the evening?
Not too late.
We? We, oh yeah, I'm not going. Okay, you, you have the voting down pat, okay. Five, five okay, next Wednesday? Okay, we'll, we'll see if they can meet at that time. All of them that are, are watching this meeting, any of you who are on First Step, you can go ahead and text me and if you're, uh, able to meet at that time. Okay. Alright, uh, back to Commissioner Delgado.
Nothing.
Sorry about that, but I think that was necessary and I scratched this one thing off my list.
Yeah, another heavy topic. Um, we, we've talked about the different terminology for it, like the living wage and things like that in the city and the idea of getting our city staff, um, and city employees to a $15 an hour wage. And I understand that we're making real progress in doing that. As part and parcel of that, I know we've, we've talked about compression and getting some, some data back on what it would look like to deal with that. But I also wanna, you know, I know that we're negotiating the first responders, some of their contracts and specifically the firefighters, and I, I wanna talk a little bit about that because we, we constantly thank and appreciate our first responders. Pretty much every time we get together, there's some, some event that they've done that's brought, uh, you know, honor to their career, their profession, and they've helped us in some way. But the reality is that our first responders in Volusia County are not the highest paid in the county, they're, in Daytona Beach are not the highest paid in the county. We lose talented people to other cities and other areas all the time. I had a trial a week or two ago and one of the jurors was a firefighter from a neighboring central Florida city and she was telling me all about, when she found out I was the city commissioner, she was, we talked about the fire and she talked about basically, I mean, it was well-known that our fire department was underpaid and that they were taking people away from us and that young, young people out of fire school would only come here for a short period of time because a better career would open up for them in central Florida. And I was shocked to learn the pay disparity between her department and our department, even though, um, I think it was a smaller department. So, you know, I, I know we've talked in the past about kind of a policy directive. I think that our first responders should be the highest paid in Volusia County and it should be a situation where we're not losing talented members to other areas, other areas are losing talented members to us. You know, we, we wanna have the best first responders that we can have, we wanna have the best police department, the best fire department. I think that's something that the citizens appreciate. I think the citizens, you know, use those facilities a lot and that's one of those things, when you need a paramedic or you need a firefighter, you need a police officer, you want the best one you can find. So, um, we've, again, we've talked about that many times. So I would like the ci, the commission as a whole to, um, put forth a policy that we want not only our firefighters and our police officers to be at that living wage, that $15 an hour as a base, but also to be paid competitively so that they are the highest paid or among the highest paid first responders in, in our region. And I think that that's consistent with what we've said time and time again. So I just, again, wanna say that's my, my personal opinion for what I think we should do and I think if other commissioners feel the same way, then we should give that, um, instruction to those members of our city who are negotiating on our behalf at the, uh, the table with the first responders. I was gonna complain about Beach Street. Uh, I read about the proposed plans for Beach Street, I know we haven't really got into discussing all that, but I hope that we will. Um, I have some real concerns about the widening of the streets and the idea of kinda parking at straight angles because every time I go to Beach Street, as I back out, I pray that I'm not smashed by a car. And, uh, I think that, you know, whatever gains we get on paper, I think that's a very dangerous proposal. And I've received some calls and some, um, criticisms and some concerns from people who are very knowledgeable about that. So I know that that's gonna be something that we're talking about, kind of the Beach Street Renaissance. And, um, I, I definitely wanna bring that up as a concern that I have and hopefully you guys can address that with us as, as the time comes. The last thing is kind of a lighthearted thing, but last time I brought up the drinking store, I realized my office was a, uh, my office, my table was like a graveyard of plastic. I had plastic from every single place, but today, not only do I have a refilled bottle, but I have a glass straw. So, um, I met with a group here in Volusia County that have kind of a grassroots organization that are encouraging restaurants primarily to, um, get rid of single-use plastics, to get away from Styrofoam, and they have a tiered system of bronze, silver and gold. And if you get gold status, you get kind of recognized on their website, some other perks. So I met with them and I, I encouraged them to bring businesses into the fold and find ways that just as a business, I could do things to be more mindful of that. And I too could be, you know, bronze, silver or gold and get advertising on their website and all those things. Because I think, you know, it's a, it's a good source of education. It may be a small, relatively small, uh, thing to do, but again, it adds up and it's a form of education if people see, oh, why are you doing that? It's a chance to have the conversation and educate people a little bit about being environmentally conscious. I talked before about whether we as a city wanted to adopt either a, a voluntary plastics , a policy for our city, like the city staff, or whether we wanted to try to restrict, um, people in the city from using certain things, or we wanted to attach restrictions to benefits, like if you're gonna have a food truck here, if you're gonna have a, um, a Bike Week booth and you gotta use, you know, you can't use, uh, non-recyclable plastics and things like that. So what I'm gonna hopefully come back to you guys with and working with this group is kind of a series of incentives and things like that that we can as a city do to help encourage people and businesses, restaurants to voluntarily get away from using so much plastic. Maybe we can, um, you know, if they're gonna switch to slightly more expensive straws, and there's all kinds of different straws, from noodles to rice paper straws to like the, you know, the truly reusable glass and metal variety, if they're gonna do little changes like that that might cost them money, maybe the city can find a way of incentivizing that or giving them small perks in exchange for that so that we kind of encourage them to be better partners to the environment. And we, the city, can kind of put that out as a value that, hey, in this city, we value the environment and we're willing to work with businesses and restaurants to show that value. So hopefully I'll bring that back to you guys in a couple of months. Um, I just met with them today, I thought it was a, I thought it was a good idea, they had a lot of good information, I know there's, I think they're gonna do a presentation at some point, but I hope to come back with some kind of public-private partnership that we can work with, um, to kind of put the environment, move it forward a little bit. I recognize it may be, you know, low-hanging fruit, but it's still, you know, fruit worth picking. So, uh, I appreciate the time that I took for you tonight and, uh, that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on to Commissioner May, I'd like to go back, Commissioner Delgado was a little speedy for me. I was under the impression that when staff brought us the, um, the calculations for the $15 an hour, 'cause based on what you just said, they didn't include first responders? I thought that was for all staff.
Everybody.
They were, that was everybody?
Well, it did include first responders because they're already over 15, they all start in the 30s. What it didn't include was fixing compression, which was gonna cost, you know, another three or four million dollars a year. So my position has always been, let's work on the first responders now and let's work on the, you know, because it was, it's a fairly small number of people that are making between 12 and 15.
Well, there's some cra, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, there's some complicated thing about their weeks versus our, what I think is our weeks, like the 40-hour work week, there's a different schedule that they use, it's like a 70, I don't know, it's, it drives me nuts, I've tried to figure it out, it's, it's surprisingly complicated.
So what?
Four hour. That puts them in a different class of emp, there's a different category then, I guess it's not the standard, like overtime isn't based on, there's a different class of employee, right?
Uh, you wanna come up, Mr. Sexton, you wanna help us for a moment?
I think we can do one or the other, we can't do both. I think it will take years to.
Good evening, Jim Sexton, Humanities Sources Director. So there's, uh, the $15 an hour thing and then there's the vernacular of, we're trying to change it to a $31,200 living wage instead of calling it 15 an hour. So the specific question on the table now is, what about firefighters? How come they're not 15 an hour if their base rate of pay is 34.5? Well, their, their base rate of pay is based on, um, 2,912 hours where the normal 40-hour per week employee is based on 2,080. So that's the difference. So if you looked at, um, our admin staff who do not work the 24 on and 48 off and they use the 40-hour work week, they're well over the $15 an hour 'cause they're at 34,500. But the shift employees, um, their hourly rate is lower because they work 2,912 hours a year, that's the difference. So we've been focusing on calling it the $31,200 living wage rather than the $15 an hour living wage.
Is that?
$15 an hour is 31,200 exactly.
No, but if you're working the extra 800 or 900 hours, it's, it's closer to $11, right?
12 and some change, something like that, yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
I would love to tell my employees I've redefined their work week to have them work a hun, you know, that much more. I mean, that's a different federal rule, right? That's a.
Yeah, there's 7K exemption on the Fair Labor Standards Act and they do get premium time on hours over, and this one always confuses me too, I think it's confusing as well, but, um, anything over, I think it's 56-hour work week and then over, um, X hours in a 28-day cycle, they get premium pay for that, built in. So it isn't just 34.5, they get premium pay on top of that. It's built in. Now I guess what I haven't done is built in the, you know, the $1,000 of premium pay, if I added that back into the equation, now what is it? Still not gonna make $15 an hour, that would have to be like 43,000. I mean, you take 15 times 2,912, that's what you would be considering your base pay, but then there'd be premium pay on top of that, that's built in, that the overtime.
What is, what are the, do you know what the, what the pay of another firefighter, a similar firefighter in another, uh, central Florida city like ours would be?
Sure. I mean, so, um, on, uh, fire, we are one of the lower of the ranges. We have been negotiating with the IFF this year, well, all the units, but, um, so the, the amount of money that we would be offering would bring us in within $300 of the highest paid base rate of pay for Volusia County. By year two, we would be the highest.
Highest paid in Volusia County?
Yes.
Across all ranks, like in, all the different?
Yes. Our max has always been very competitive, like our max is the, maybe it's not the best, it's certainly the second or third best right now. Right now, we're focusing on, in our negotiations, focusing on, um, compression type issues. We're trying to address the commission's goal of being the highest paid in Volusia County while addressing those who were long-term dedicated employees who came in in 2007, 2008 when the recession hit and, and nobody was getting increases. That's all employees, but not just firefighters. But we're trying to address that, we're giving them the bigger piece of the pie, so to speak, with our pot of money that we have to use that's in the budget and we're giving bigger raises. For example, one of the proposals that they've seen is, um, two and a half, um, for, that's not true, that was, I'm thinking police. On year two, what we're doing is, instead of giving them 4% in April, the less senior would get two, the, the more senior would get three, we got them anywhere going from, um, two to like 6% on year two. So year one would be like a three, four, year two would be three, and then based on your seniority, it would be between two and six.
Percent of their, percent of their current salary raise?
Yes.
Like 103% of what they're, they'd make, they'd go up 3% from their last year or something like that?
Yeah, so October, they would get 3% and then April, they would get 4% and then in the next October, they would get 3% and then, then the following April, they would get anywhere between 2 and 6%. That's just kinda some numbers and some negotiations we've been throwing around.
But in two years, I would bring them up, like what total percentage would they have gone up, with the threes and the three?
Uh, anywhere from 12 to 18%.
Okay.
And that's the same with police, like some of the, some of the police officers in the collective bargaining, um, will be anywhere from like 12 or 12 and a half over a two-year period to 18. We're just basically taking the pot of money that's budgeted and chopping it up among, um, those that have been here longer, giving them a bigger piece of that money and those who have been here less time, giving it less.
Is there like an idiot's guide to the firefighter and police budget that I could get to look at, like they'd kind of have it simplified or?
You mean, I don't know, like I can show you my, certainly I can show you my proposals and.
I, I just, it's, it's more complicated than it seems because of the different hours and the, and the, those things, it's not a straight line equation, so I was just wondering.
Police is very similar to normal Fair Labor Standards, they're just scheduled 42 hours a week, so there's only two hours of built-in overtime, but we do base their hourly rate on 40 hours.
Okay.
Where the firefighters are based on the 2,912. Unless you're the admin staff that works 40, then your base rate of pay, which starts right now at 34.5, if you're the admin staff, it's based on 2,080 hours and whatever that equates to, you know, 34.5 divided by 2,080, I don't know the exact math.
And for the non-fire, are we also doing the, are we, we've budgeted to get everybody to that 31.5, you said, or?
31.2.
31.5.
And yes, so that, that proposal is on the table with the APSME bargaining unit, which is all the employees who are anywhere between, you know, 11 and some change to less than[1741.01] which is all the employees who are anywhere between, you know, eleven and some change to less than fifteen an hour on up, obviously. But yes, that is on the table. Um, we've kind of addressed what happens to the employee who's been here during that same period of time who did not get, uh, a raise during the two thousand eight through thirteen period. And what we're doing is anybody who's getting, uh, brought up to the fifteen dollars an hour. So, um, if, if the raises that we would normally give did not get you to fifteen, you stay at the fifteen. And then in year two, if the raises that we would normally give in year two still wouldn't have got you to the fifteen, you stay at the fifteen unless you've been here seven years. So you were here during that period of time that the raises weren't given. You will continue to move with the standard raises that will be given.
Okay.
That's all the compression issue.
Um, it certainly works towards solving it. Like we've been working with the IFF. The, the past two contracts have had, um, and you could look at the exhibits on those, like certain levels of employees, the, the less senior got a little less, the, the, those in the middle got a little more and those at the tops of the ranges got a little less. So we've been doing that over the past two collective bargaining agreements for a total of four years. Um, so it has put a dent in the compression issues and this one will certainly take another step in fixing that as well as dressing, addressing the commission's, um, kind of directive to us or our marching orders of make sure we're certainly well-respected or the highest in Volusia County and if not the highest within, I think this year, if we give it the seven percent over the course of October and April, we would be about three hundred dollars in annual base pay different. Like I think the top is around thirty-seven, three and if I give them the three and the four in April and move the range with that, we'll be at, um, thirty-six, nine. So we'll be within three or four hundred dollars. Certainly better than we are now. I don't like, I don't think anybody's packing up their wares and heading to another city for four hundred dollars. And then by year two, giving it three percent in, uh, October, we will then exceed all the other jurisdictions unless they somehow give bigger raises too.
Are you assuming that those other jurisdictions are given three percent a year?
Yeah, so, so I do have a little bit of intel on that right now and surveying the other cities and they're looking between, um, anywhere between three and five percent this year and we're looking at seven on the, a five percent cost. That's why we're splitting it up by giving some of the raise in, in April, but we're able to, to do a five percent cost but give seven into the paycheck, so to speak.
Then on the APSME folks, what you're really doing is you're front-loading their next couple, their next two years of wages all into one lump in the beginning to get them at the fifteen and then you just leave them there until year three.
Yeah, so out of about three hundred and fifty APSME members that are, um, you know, covered under the unit, sixty-eight are under fifteen. Now that could be fourteen eighty-five, but it's just that, that many is under, uh, the fifteen. So there are some that are getting as much as twenty-six percent, but again, they're gonna be frozen for at least this two-year collective bargaining agreement. Now, year three, you know, when we go back to the table, we can even address that then and say, well, you got twenty-six percent, you know, two years ago, you're still gonna be frozen for a minute or we can figure out how to move them forward from there.
And what about, have you done any calculations related to attrition and then needing to bring in new hires at fifteen?
So yes, the, the, the budgeted amount that we have on there, obvi- it, it includes all the vacancies that we currently have, um, moving those vacancies that were budgeted at the lower amount to the fifteen dollar an hour. So that, that amount is in the budget. Um, also, I think what we'll be able to do is, and I haven't mentioned this out loud, but when we move those ranges, so when you have range that right now might start at twenty-four thousand and then the next range might start at twenty-six thousand and the next range might start at twenty-eight thousand, what we're gonna do is those have obviously a, a high end maximum on those ranges. We're gonna leave those intact, but the bottom of those ranges are all gonna move to fifteen. So anybody, so what happens here is if I get hired and I'm at this grade that would have been higher than that other fifteen dollar an hour grade, I'm gonna get there because my max is gonna be greater. So as long as I continue to move through my grade, I will make a higher rate than these other grades. And then the other thing we might look at is in, in banding those particular classifications into one higher classification where we don't necessarily have that man-made compression issue by calling them a lower grade or when we go to higher positions in those lower grades, we figure out, well, maybe instead of hiring a maintenance worker one, since we're paying fifteen anyway, we might as well hire a maintenance worker three. That's within that grade anyway. So we could look at that as well and, and, and look for higher skilled employees that, um, that we think we'll be able to attract. I mean, I talked to Deltona the other day and they, they did this a couple of years ago and they're, because their turnover rate was very high in a lot of their, their areas and they said they were hovering around twenty-three percent and within two years of implementing the fifteen dollars an hour, now they're hovering around nine to eleven percent, which is an average turnover rate. So we're thinking one, we'll be able to recruit and retain skilled employees. We'll be able to demand more, obviously, of our employees. Or we think in our, in our applicant pool and say if we're, if we're paying a thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollar wage for, you know, our lawn cares and, and the, and the lower level positions within the organization, we should be able to get the best of the best of those folks.
Put a total price tag on this?
Um, I don't know it off the top of my head, but, um, no, I don't wanna give you a wrong number. There, there is a price tag. It is within the five percent cost budget that, that we put forward though. The budget, we're not exceeding the budget on any of the bargaining units.
And we're gonna be able to do this with, and keep the, the tax increase, it roll back, between rollback and two or three?
Yes.
I mean, nothing more than that?
That's right.
Is that it? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job, by the way. That's, that's good work.
All you.
He's done. Commissioner May?
Good evening. I'll try to be brief. So I want to address something. Uh, let me start with something simple. Uh, Lenox Park. Thank you so much to the city for taking care of the park for us and we are looking at replacing the basketball hoops. I believe they've been ordered. They're ready to go. Um, and the benches, we're doing some really nice things back there on Beachside, so I appreciate that. I've again been in constant contact with FPL and now we're looking at October. Um, I received some word back, uh, to do the lights on Main Street. And this is not because of the city. We have fulfilled our part of the com- of the contract. It's now FPL Lighting Commission to do their part of the work, so we're ready to go on that. Regarding Beach Street, so today, about three weeks ago, the city manager and I started going to Beach Street, uh, to speak with the merchants. We hit a couple of merchants. Many of them weren't open first thing in the morning, um, so we went again today. And, uh, what I discovered was a huge amount of misinformation and anxiety caused by people who were basing everything on supposition, which made everything really crazy for me. I, I couldn't understand why we were hearing all of these things. Coming to find out that people believe that there'll be parallel parking, so I'm gonna say this again and Mr. Chisholm is here. There is no parallel parking on the new proposed Beach Street streetscape. It's going to be angled parking on both sides and we are going to achieve additional parking spots as a result of it. After speaking with the merchants who were in and we spent considerable time with them and we took pictures with them, I did that for a reason because I'm gonna be honest, at some level, I don't think people believe that the city manager and I are actually going to go door to door. And if you know me, you should believe that this is in fact happening. Right? So the merchants, once we spoke with them, had questions and Mr. Chisholm was able to address them. The merchants are feeling more comfortable. They voiced their concerns and we listened to it. And some of them had fantastic suggestions that we had not in fact thought of and which we're going to research and possibly implement. So we started at the South Block. Two of those will also have to include Palmetto because they're impacted as well and Orange and Bay and Magnolia. And so we will methodically start first on the South Block between Orange and Magnolia. We have to wash over it a few times so we catch everybody in and then we'll go to the next block and the next block and the next block until we complete the project. So that is where we are with it. Uh, one thing that we did, which we already realized and we worked two things. First thing is that we need everybody to know that Beach Street will stay open. They'll be open for business. If you have Facebook accounts, the businesses are doing it too. Um, run your campaign saying that we are open and we are not in fact shut. We will always have lanes of traffic opens and the merchants will be open. We're gonna use some, some marketing strategy behind that. The other thing is, as it relates to going to St. Petersburg, it's up to us to, you know, I have this dream that somebody comes to Daytona Beach and someone says to them, hey, what do you think of Daytona Beach? And the resident says, I love Daytona Beach. We heard that when we went to St. Petersburg. I would love for that to start here in Daytona Beach as well. The people I meet are enthusiastic about Daytona Beach, but I'd like for that to become our ongoing narrative. The CBB is working on something called hashtag I love Daytona Beach. And I think that's an important thing for us to do moving forward for the city's future. You know, when I go to the beach and I'm on the beach, and this is a county issue, not us, I see a lot of cigarette butts. And I see it on Main Street. I see it on Side Street, but I see it on the waterline because I run there quite often, especially when it's low tide. It's like the skim of dirt. And visitors see that and it's not even, it's us. I see that. We see that every single day and I think we deserve better as it relates to that. So hopefully the county can do something if they're listening. And I believe that the well here it is. So strap in. Here we go. In Zone Three and in many other zones, we have an issue with Airbnbs that are not Airbnbs. They're in fact illegal entities renting out their properties. I would like to know, in the areas that are not designed for this activity, what can we do as a commission? What can we do about this? Mr. Jaggers, is there anything that we can do about this?
Well, it's primarily a code enforcement issue, so if, if they're operating Airbnbs illegally in residential areas where they're not zoned for that use, then, um, it's a matter for code enforcement and enforcement, uh, through their means.
So some cities, and I've been doing some research, are enacting some fairly severe penalties, up to a thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars a day. My question is, can we do something like this?
Well, you, you have, you have that in place now to some degree. Uh, your Code Enforcement Board has the authority to issue daily fines, which, uh, then accumulate over time if the issue is not remedied. And for a typical residential property, they're as high as fifteen thousand dollars and then those fine amounts max out as the property values go up higher. So, um,
How long-
We do have that capability through the Code Enforcement Board.
How long does that process take?
Depends on the amount of the daily fine that the Code Enforcement Board would issue. Um, so it, it really depends on the, the case.
From the violation until the time it gets to the code board, how much time has elapsed there?
Well, the, the way the, um, the code procedure works and it's statutory, this is not city policy, this is state law. Um, they're required to be given what we call a CEB one, which is a notice of violation. Um, and typically they're given thirty days to remedy the condition. Um, and if they don't come into compliance, then they're given a second notice, uh, CEB two. Uh, and that sets them for hearing in front of the code board, in, in which case the fine would be set.
Okay, so hypothetically, somebody comes in and they're caught on a Friday. They get a citation. Um, we come back on a Saturday and they're still have people there and we come back on a Sunday and they still have people there. What happens to them?
Well, each day is considered to be a separate violation. I think it's a matter of practice that that's a single violation that's heard before the board. And then so typically that, that's what happens. It goes to the board and, uh, they make a determination as to whether there's a violation and issue a fine. They can also do what they call a will fine. So if it's a repeat violation, even though they may have come into compliance, when they come back to the board on a repeat violation, uh, they automatically issue the fine and not have the initial notice requirement.
Are we doing that now?
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't know if the chief is here. He can probably speak to these, uh, enforcement issues better than I.
Thank you.
You have questions for him? You want him to-
I would just like us to be a little bit more, I know that we're finding people. I know they would, come on over, sir. I know that we're doing a good job with it, but you know, I'm concerned that this seems to be a growing epidemic. I'm concerned that it's taking housing units off the market and it's also impacting my residents in the Beachside community unfairly. People did not ask for this when they bought property here. We have clearly designated areas operate within those areas. I don't even call them Airbnbs. These are just illegal activities that I would like to see curb drastically and quickly.
Um, yes, um, so they are, that issue is occurring throughout the city. First off, my name's Scottley. I'm a District Two captain. I'm also, also the captain oversees code enforcement, um, which is why I'm up here trying to answer these questions for you. Um, Mr. Jagger did pretty adequately explain.
Close.
Uh, it's, it seems so simple and fast when he, when you explain it, but there's, uh, there are some lag times in between when people, um, are working through the process of doing the code, uh, correcting the code violations. Sometimes that lengthens the process. Also, that first step or that first stop at the board is usually just where they're declared either in compliance or non-compliance and it's another thirty days before they actually are fined. And that's if they're not making an effort to try to come into compliance. So it can, it can lengthen depending on the scenario for each case. There are things that we are, as a staff, working through and discussing, uh, trying to develop a way to more effectively address, uh, the, the short-term rentals that are occurring in the city. There are quite a few that are, um, many that we don't even know about yet that are occurring in, in the city, um, both on the west side and, and the east side of the city. Uh, many of them occur on the peninsula side and we're working to try to address that, yes. Is that, I'm, is there a different part of the question you want me to answer?
I just know that some cities are going to pretty strict, um, strict fine policies and they're collecting on it. And I'm just wondering if we could do some research on how we can maybe get to that place, if it's something the commission would like.
Well, I'm not sure if the city maybe, or other cities have a, a more streamlined process. We could look into that and try to determine if there's something that maybe streamlines it for this type of issue. But it, he is correct. We, we already have a process in place that we use and we do bring those people to code board and we do recommend fines and they make decisions based on our recommendations.
Captain, I think what she's saying, uh, would you find out if their citations when they issue, and we have a ten dollar fine, or a hundred dollar fine, uh, are there, do they have a, a greater leeway in the fines that they use?
So people are being charged ten or one hundred dollars, but they're making two fifty a night and continuing to do so.
Um, well, there's no standard fine that we, that we've, that we set. Um, so if the wish is that we recommend a higher fine, we can recommend a higher fine. We can recommend, um, well, we, we have a range and I can't remember the, quite the range that we can, it's from basically zero all the way up to, I believe, is five thousand dollars the cap? I don't recall it. It's a, yeah, it's four figures anyway. So, um, and we can recommend within there. So we could recommend a hundred dollar a day fine. We could recommend a two hundred and fifty dollar a day fine. So if you would like to see something where we recommend a higher fine for short-term rental violations, we can. I think the, the best way to kind of combat this issue is start to identify them and then start to rigorously enforce the ordinance. It's already in, or the zoning that's already in place. And then at that point, um, if there's reoccurring violations or people that are repeat, is to go to the will fine because then you're, you're, you're creating a smaller window of time of when you're fining them. And that's where you're gonna get that.
What did you call that? Go to the what?
The will fine, which is what he discussed where, where they've already been in front of the code board, so it just shortens the timeframe. Next time they come back, it's an immediate fine that's set down by the board.
Now, do these other municipalities that you've stated, do they use a code enforcement board? Is it the same process?
They do. Some of them outsource it, but their fines are steep. One thousand, five thousand, ten thousand. They're not playing games and they're, they're trying to reduce this because it's a hazard to visitors who don't know what they're getting. They then associate this negative experience with, let's say, Daytona Beach, wherever they are. Um, it's reducing our housing stock, uh, quite a bit in certain areas because why would I wanna rent to somebody long-term if I can make an exorbitant amount of money and not pay taxes on it and then on top of it, not pay the bed tax, which the rest of us are saddled with? All of this is wholly unfair to the population of people or A, doing it correctly and B, the rest of the citizens who are living in those communities.
I agree and I commend you for, uh, uh, bringing this to light tonight in this fashion and would like to concur with something stronger.
You know, would you have a plan that you're working on to A, fine these people because there are systems in place? That's number one. And number two, I really want us to go to a higher rate that before you think about doing this, understand the profit you've made, you will lose it immediately.
I hear exactly what you're saying.
I guess the question is, what action would have, would we have to take for you to issue a, a different fine than what you're currently using?
Um, well, I think that we can issue a different fine. We, there's no action that you would need to take. We would just, I would need to convey that down to staff that when we run into a short-term rental issue where somebody's you, doing this outside of zoning, our recommendation is gonna start here and that, and, and that, that can be handled tomorrow. I can make that, that, that clear to all the staff.
And that amount? Who sets that amount?
Um, well, as long as it's within that window, that, that, that-
So if you start at five hundred dollars to begin with, then that should get their attention initially.
Let me interject this also. Here's the thing. Because I don't think you're catching enough people either.
Yes.
And one thing I wanna say is, is this. It's about seven years ago, I went to a meeting of residents and they asked for stronger, more proactive code enforcement. And a couple of meetings ago, one of our frequent critics of the commission acknowledged how effective code enforcement has been.
Okay.
So you've been very effective.
Appreciate that.
Over the last seven years and I think it's just gotten much better and better. But now she is asking for something new. There is no way that you're gonna continue to be as effective as you are and have been in what you've been effective in and add this and take it to the level that she wants to take it to.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't interrupt you.
That's okay. Now, I'm just saying to, to us and to you that in order to reach that goal and if we all agree that this is a goal that is worthy of pursuing and we're in budget mode, then we need to do something to say that we, we, you know, I'll let everybody else talk about it, but if you agree, I agree that we need to ratchet it up before we give you the direction.
Did we add budget? Did we add budget, in the budget, did we add staffing for you guys?
Well, that's what I was going to say, you are correct, sir. We didn't, we're increasing our rental program by one inspector, which will help tremendously. And then on top of that, we're making an attempt to identify software or algorithms that we can use to help us identify those things more rapidly and address them more effectively.
Okay, well, we don't, no further comment from me, you can carry on.
I really would like that, that program. We're looking at costs with that to see if it's worth it to us, right? So it's not hurting the citizens by using this. But ultimately, quality of life is the key initiative for Daytona Beach and the commission here. We always support that. This speaks to it. So if you could do more research on the software and then maybe come back and tell us next time about it, how it works, and whether or not you believe in your professional opinion it would serve the community in Daytona Beach, I would appreciate that. But that fine needs to be effective for me.
Right, and we can do that.
Just to clarify, we put, give you three positions this year. You've got two officers and a supervisor, four, four positions. The rental inspector plus the other three.
Right, yes, and he's correct. The two code enforcement officers will supplement our already code program that we're doing. We kind of, I try to keep the rental program kind of separated. We have that additional inspector plus hopefully this program. And then there'll be a supervisor to help us improve the effectiveness.
I just want to make sure that you have the resources, because this is important. Just as important as what we said seven, eight years ago, because they're taking over. Okay.
Thank you so much, and thank you for that consideration, Mr. Mayor. And I'm all done, thank you so much.
And I can add to this, again, through the miracle of technology, my paralegal Amy Hampton has forwarded me the answer to your question. The fines are up to $1,000 per day. And for repeat violations, it's up to $5,000 per occurrence.
Go up.
To me, the lag is the problem. So when Hector was running code, one of the things he floated was, you got these guys who throw a rack of clothes out on the sidewalk and then they got 30 days to secure it.
Right.
The rack has been pulled back in at the end of the day, there's no fine.
Yep.
But he had identified some other cities that had found ways where which you could, the code enforcement officer was fining them that day. It's here, you're not allowed to have it, here's your fine. That's the kind of program we need if we want to stop what's happening to our neighborhoods. And, you know, that, so.
Well, how do we get that?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure, because it just didn't go anywhere. I'm not sure if, I think Marie was the city attorney then and it kind of got clocked up and.
It feels like on the spot or just in time, so it happens at that moment in real time, and is that possible?
It's 60 days later.
I think we can.
Where the fine starts, you know.
Can we issue a citation for a fine right immediately?
You can issue a citation as prosecuted through the county court system, but your standard fine amount is $100. You don't have the same enforcement mechanism as you do through code, in terms of the amount of the fine.
But that, that $6,000, it was 60 days before we initiated the fine. That's, to me, that's where it's broken, is it just doesn't get the, you know, you've got to wait so long.
Right.
And then you've got, then you can demonstrate an attempt to comply fairly easily. These are not, you know, the easiest things to prove. The reputable, you know, kind of, you know, Airbnb's and VRBOs, you know, those things. Our folks were fining, you know, Daytona Beach properties on there. Well, then all of a sudden, you've got to get on and give them a credit card number and all this stuff, they need to set up an account before you can search. And they did that so that code people couldn't find them. You know, so it's, it's harder for these folks to do it, to do their job. You know, but to me, I think the big gap is, how do we do it faster? How do we start hitting them in the pocketbook, you know, earlier in the process so that, you know, they haven't, you know, I mean, they might decide just to rent for special events or something. And we all suffer through this. You know, anytime there's a spring break, you get somebody renting their house out to a whole bunch of kids. You know, the bike event.
And parking and trash.
Parking and trash, you have motorcycles coming all hours, day and night. You know, it happens out in my zone quite a bit, you know, during the races. You know, they're generally not as obnoxious as some of the other ones, but they, you know, but it still happens. And you find that there's excess people in the, you know, staying in the houses and things like that. But I, I agree with you, the bigger fine would be great, but I, I would like for us to explore some way that we could actually fine them on the site.
Well, the way to do that would be to issue, as I said, a citation that's prosecuted in county court. Do you have a fine schedule which you adopt? And as I said, the typical fine is $100. We have enhanced fines for other types of violations, generally dealing with homeless issues or panhandling. You could adopt a revised or amended fine schedule to increase your fine, but it's subject to whatever the court will impose. And so you can't have an exorbitant fine which doesn't match the crime, the courts won't impose it. But you can recommend a fine through your fine schedule above 100, you need to pick the number. Our highest fine, I believe, is $250.
There, I believe there's precedent being set in other cities down south, and so we could probably take a look at those. I'm happy to send you that information, but precedent is being set all over right now for this.
All right, thank you, I'll be glad to look at that.
But I bet if you got to 250, you'd see a lot of these people be like, I don't deserve this anymore because I can't rent my house for 500 to make my other 250, you know, and pay the fine.
To make my penalty.
And as I said earlier, each day is a separate violation, so you can ping subsequent, you know, fines of 250.
The one other property brought up, it eating up the housing stock, it also artificially inflates the cost of housing. Because now all of a sudden, instead of it being a home, it's a business. So it's worth five times what the, what the home might be worth because it's something that's turning a, you know, $100,000 a year profit or $50,000 a year profit. You know, it's, it's unfortunate. We ran into this with some of these apartment complexes that we tore down because they were all cash. And they couldn't sell it for enough to make what they were making in a profit, making a profit by, you know, running a very, you know, a slumlord kind of establishment for cash. You know, and they're not declaring any of the money. You know, and we've, we, you know, of course, we got chewed out by the News Journal for doing it, but if, you know, we made all our money back for, you know, even though we overpaid for the property, you know, according to them, you know, the reduction in police calls to those properties saved us money in the long run. So it was a, it was definitely a good move on behalf of the taxpayers to make those kinds of decisions. So I, that's my two cents on it.
Well, I have faith in Captain Lee and his staff, and I know that they're working on something, and I'm looking forward to hearing that it's effective. That's what I'm looking for. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Is that it?
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gillland?
Let's see, so at our last meeting, we had the amendment to that three-party agreement for LPGA come up. And I just wanted to kind of point out that during that conversation, there were some, so there were people that were worried about, I think at least one, if not two people were concerned about, well, what's going to prevent them from coming in and developing that property? And the answer was, well, they would have to come in and ask for a zoning change. And everybody's, you know, kind of had this collective, you know, yeah, well, that, so if we can't, you know, we can force them to not, you know, to not allow the change, we can, we not allow the change, which would disincentivize them from coming in if their intent was to buy it to develop it as retail or residential. And I hope I don't, didn't misstate that, but that was my opinion was, you know, we have the authority to prevent them from closing one of the golf courses and turning it into home sites, for example. But I'd just like to remind everybody that in the very near future, I believe, we're going to see, we're going to see a request like that out at Indigo. So just keep in mind that this, LPGA is one that was kind of fresh in mind because of that, what was on our agenda three weeks ago. But, you know, we're going to have another situation where somebody's going to come in and, because they made a bad business decision in purchasing a golf course, you know, try and make a big profit by, in my opinion, probably harming the people that live in that neighborhood. I think that, I think allowing that kind of change at LPGA would also be a mistake, so.
You mean in Indigo?
In either of them.
Yeah.
Actually, in any of the golf courses in Daytona Beach. With the possible exception of maybe the Daytona municipal courses, because they are, you know, there's a way to, I think, to maybe develop some interior part of that and go to 27 or 36 holes, maybe. But, you know, certainly the golf communities where the, you know, the holes are snaking through the neighborhood and things, that's a little different than what we have over off Wilder, because they're, you know, it's a square of two golf courses. So there's only the townhomes, Ruth helped me out, at the end it's Wilder, the gray townhomes back.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are the only ones that are, they're between the eighth and ninth holes on the north course. They're the only ones that actually have, if something happened out there development-wise, that would be directly affected. And I don't think anything would happen in that area anyway. But I just wanted to kind of remind everybody, it seemed to be something that was dista, development at LPGA golf courses seemed to be distasteful in our conversation three weeks ago. Let's not forget that we're going to be probably asked that same question at Indigo here sometime in the next few months.
Let me ask you something, the folks who bought Indigo, did they try to run that as a golf course at all?
No.
They never ran it as a golf course?
No, 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 they did. So it started out, it's a, it's a Canadian guy named Colin John. And he had, he had some sort of connection with a Chinese athletic wear company. And they bought it and they tried to run it as a golf course. And they were trying to, they were selling the apparel and things like that that they were producing in China, in the golf, you know, at the, in the pro shop. You know, they had made some investments into the golf course. Something had happened with that relationship, so now Colin John is sort of on his own, from what I gather. And it, you know, it just hasn't been working out. But, you know, they, the total price tag was something a little over a million bucks. You know, they paid for that, you know, five or six years ago. But it is, you know, it's, golf is a, is a bad business to be in almost anywhere, but particularly around here. I think the only golf course in Volusia County that's making money is Riviera up in Holly Hill. One or two that are breaking even, but that's the only one that's actually making a profit out of about 30 or 35 golf courses. And none of them in Daytona Beach are making money. Which is why you're seeing that Pelican Bay South was closed, Tamoka Oaks is closed completely, Indigo is closed completely. You know, we've had the north course at Daytona closed for the summer for the rebuilding of the greens. And, you know, the, you'd think that with three courses closed right now, that there'd be enough demand that people would be making money, and it's still the same situation, that RIV is the only place making money. So it's just, it's a bad business to be in.
Crane Lakes is still open?
Crane Lakes is still open. And they are subsidized by their, the HOA fees from within the community. So they're, they're a bit, they're the new model on how you actually do golf communities.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that. My expectation is that when you buy a golf course and folks live in a golfing community, pretty much that that's what it remains, and you're not going to be able to speculate for me and turn it into something that's not congruent with what the people want who live there. And I realize that, that's, you described the state of golf, but that's pretty much where I am, so that's, I just want to put that out there. I like things.
I had two others, I asked, I've asked Jim, if you wouldn't mind forwarding everybody. One of our strategic planning sessions downstairs a few months ago, we had talked about the rec center and, you know, I'd been pretty blunt saying that it wasn't a priority for me, I wasn't willing to dedicate any, you know, tax dollars towards it. But I think that there was agreement, and Ruth, you had talked about them going through the Veterans Administration or some federal grants that might be available. And I think you had mentioned they had kind of developed a relationship with Representative Walts. And at that point, we had talked about making sure that we got an ECHO application in. And, you know, to see if that was, because it is a historical facility. So Jim, if you kind of sent everybody an update on where we stand with that ECHO application, you know, I'd appreciate it because we're.
Oh, well, I'll get the report.
You know, there's, I keep having people come up to me and tell me, oh, they can fix it for $200,000. Like, they can't fix it for $200,000. That is just not going to happen. You know, it's going to cost more than that to fix all the things that weren't done right the first time. You know, like the, you know, half-done electrical work and things like that that have been a problem for many, many years. But, you know, we probably could get it open for 500,000, but the problem is, that jacks up your annual maintenance cost. If you don't do it right up front, you're going to end up paying more annually to keep the place from, you know, falling into disrepair. You know, the million-dollar number for the renovation is the one where you actually will have a normal level of maintenance that will be obligated, you know, in future years. But, you know, I, there was, you know, the county's talking about reducing the ECHO mileage rate because they believe they have excess funds. Well, they get excess funds, I think we should take them all. So all of them.
Yeah.
All $6 million.
We got the projects for them.
So it's a.
We do.
But I think that, I think it's a qualifying project because of, you know, the old dance hall it used to be and, and, you know, I think that there's also the, it's a good project based on the bridge and the memorial and everything else that's going on in that little corridor. You know, if we can, you know, if we can secure the funding.
Okay, so you're, you'll give us an update and while you're on that, that was on my list. They would like to present to us a proposal to repair it with a reputable architect and a reputable builder as a part of their team. Now, it doesn't meet the threshold that Commissioner Gilliland has stated, but they would like at our next meeting. So how about we allot them a 15-minute time slot to make that presentation? Because they want to have a proposal to try to raise the money.
We haven't talked at all about, you know, if they were to lease the building from us, what they would pay. You know, tonight we passed the Bridge Club over on Driftwood. And so they have a very low annual rent, but they do all the capital, they pay for all the capital improvements over there. You know, so we would need to come up with some kind of arrangement. I honestly was a little surprised that they said that they had only raised about $8,000. Because they don't charge for admissions, so it's just donations that come in. But if we're going to put, get in a situation where they're going to be, you know, have full use of the building, full control of the building, you know, if they get into, if it's a lease where they've got to pay the insurance and the, all the maintenance, the utilities, you know, that's going to be thousands of dollars a month. You know, you know, aside from the costs upfront to get the place inhabitable, I don't know that anybody's even talked about whether or not, from a business model perspective, you know, they could afford to move in there. And if their plan is they move in and the taxpayers pay all the bills, that's not something I'm interested in pursuing. But I don't, I have a problem with them coming in and giving their presentation, but.
Some sort of bond or something?
What's that?
Like a performance bond or something? I mean, do you want to make sure they have the financial wherewithal to weather it?
Well, I think we, we at least need a budget. We need to figure out what it is that they're, they're thinking. Because right now, the emails we're seeing and, you know, the letters people are writing, are all saying that we should just give it to them. You know, I can tell you, if we gave them that building, just deeded it over to them, they could never open it. They could never do, raise enough money to get it fixed and then be able to, you know, be able to maintain it and operate it. You know, and they wouldn't, you know, they would, there would be some tax breaks they'd get as a 501(c)(3), but, you know, there's more to this story than just the building. And I think there would be a great addition down there. And I think it's a good location, with the exception, there's no parking. You know, and I think you had mentioned, Quanita, that they, you know, they really kind of rely on foot traffic and there isn't any foot traffic over there. You know, but it's certainly something worth trying to preserve. But I think, I think the best bet is going to be, if we can get, you know, grant money to fix it and then come up with some way to work with them to figure out, you know, how they can afford a, you know, a $5,000 a month kind of rent with, you know, or they, or they're responsible for all the insurance and maintenance and things like that.
It would involve that they charge for admission, which they don't charge.
They don't charge.
They don't charge, no. And so they would have to start to do that at a pretty hefty cost with guaranteed, you know, with guaranteed attendees every single month to make the rent and make the bills.
Well, I concur that they, I don't think they should necessarily charge, but they got to find a way to raise more money to be able to manage that. And I think they should have to, we can't just give them the building and then maintain the building and pay the insurance. So I like your idea of seeing if we can find a way to raise the money by grant. And maybe the money that they raise, if they could, if they, if we were able to raise the money by grant. But first, let's see what they have to say, what their plan is. And let's work together with them in that way, that if we are able to raise the money and they're able to raise the money also, then maybe if they raise 250,000, they could use that money to be able to take care of the building. You know, sort of as a foundation, that sort of.
We'd probably have to match any grant. And I don't think they're going to have, they're not going to have the money to match, but that's something, we can make that decision if that's what we want to do.
Are ECHO grants match? They're not match.
Most of them, I think, they don't pay for everything.
I think there's a percentage, but it's not a, it's not a 50/50.
I don't remember.
Fine is 50/50.
Almost everything we, we have is a, is a match.
Everything else, they, we've paid for our centers and skate parks, we've paid money for them.
You know, because we always build something that's vastly more expensive than the. You know, because we always build something that's vastly more expensive than the amount of the grant that we went for. But, you know, when we got money for, um-
None have ever been free.
Trying to think, the, the trail money, I guess it wasn't ECHO money.
Only, the only hundred percent trail money was Florida Trail stuff.
Yeah, that was coming out of the state.
Nothing, none of the other, all the, all the other was matched.
Office of Greenway and Trails, yeah.
Yeah.
Um-
Okay. So, we agree that they, they'll be able to come to the next meeting and make a presentation?
Um, Mr. Mayor, yeah.
Okay.
Can I just add something?
Yes, ma'am.
We have so many nonprofits that have been here for a long time, come to City Commission. They've been here for years, right? And I wonder, if we're doing this for one, are we also saying that everybody can come up and make the same request? Are we opening that door? Or are we saying only in this situation?
They could find a VA grant that would help them move forward. Um, you know, that would differentiate them from the other, you know, 501(c)(3)'s that, you know, that operate around here.
But, but we're saying at this point that we're comfortable with other 501(c)(3)'s who may be of legacy in town or have access to funds to do the same thing and say, we'd like that building. Is that the door we're opening right now, or not?
I think it's case by case.
I swear it is for me.
I think it's case by case.
These are veterans.
It's case by case.
They're American veterans, and I, I, I believe in trying to figure a way to help them promote their story, so it's case by case. But this is a unique, um, organization, a unique calling, and also a unique tie to what we're trying to do there. I mean, it's, it's, not everything would fit there in that sort of way. But I do understand that, you know, but that's why we're up here. We have to be able to tell people, no, we're not gonna allow you to put a Boys and Girls Club on here, you know, for the same price that what we did for them.
I think what we're saying is, anybody can come and ask.
Yeah, they can.
Not begging ahead, okay?
Doesn't mean we're gonna say it.
That's good.
Yeah. I'm not, yeah.
Um, and my last thing, um, so, the Space Square project out there, the old Home Depot shopping center, they are, uh, you know, they, there was a, uh, an announcement yesterday about a partnership they've done with, with Riddle, um, to build upon their, their incubator, uh, area that they have out there, um, the Micuplex and whatnot's going on in that general area. Uh, you know, some, you know, some of those companies have done well enough that they've kind of outgrown the space, and they need something bigger to get into. Um, you know, these older retail centers are not going to resurrect as retail centers. And I think what, you know, I've, I've had a few meetings with, uh, with Chad Hagel, who's the, uh, the engine behind this whole project. And, you know, and, and I've actually, if I remember a couple of meetings ago, I asked, um, Bob to kind of dust off the old uh, teledyne tax payment we did, since it wasn't an owner-occupied building, it was a tenant, you know, how we could, uh, you know, do something out there to, to, to try and help move this thing along. Um, he's got about, uh, I, I bet he's got half the building, you know-
Leased.
Leased, you know, or, or letters of intent or, or that he's ready to move forward with. You know, and these are good research and development kind of, kind of positions. Um, you know, but there is, uh, sort of an initial stumbling block that he's having some issues with. And it has to do with the agreement for the, the retail center, the REA for, for everything. And, um, he needs to get an amendment to that, and he needs to get Home Depot to agree to the amendment. Now, I've agreed to write as a commissioner, not on behalf of the commission, but as a commissioner, um, you know, that, that I support the project, and I think that it's a, you know, there, there's a lot of benefits to the community and, um, you know, you know, talk about some of the real positive attributes. Uh, and, and have that sent to Home Depot so that they will engage in dialogue with him about that, that amendment. Um, I think it's important to kind of everybody know, at least, you know, at a high level, what's going on out there. Uh, he's, it's actually expanded to include some other properties at this point. You know, he's worked with, you know, he's been working with the, the state, the CEO Alliance, the, the county, the city, uh, Space Florida, a lot of different disparate groups. And everybody is kind of, you know, really impressed and happy with the opportunity. Um, all these dominos have to fall in a particular order, but I think really that, that, that first one's gonna be getting Home Depot to, to agree to what are really some very minor modifications to the REA related primarily to parking. I'm not sure if there's a use restriction in there that would need to be modified or not, but it's, it's either, it's either only parking or it's use and parking. But it's nothing that really, would really directly affect them. But at this point, I think he's having trouble getting the dialogue started. So, um, I'm, would like for everybody to learn, and, and, Mr. Mayor, I know you've had some conversations as well, so you're, uh, well-versed on, on what he's, he's doing, but I don't think the most, most of the rest of you have had the conversations. But I've been asking that he, uh, either, uh, give us a presentation or that he give us some documentation about, you know, his, his plan. And then, you know, potentially, um, you know, if, if everyone agrees that it is something that we're, we would like to encourage, maybe even passing a resolution encouraging Home Depot to have a conversation with him. You know, uh, not to necessarily endorse the amendments or whatever, but to begin the dialogue at least. Because this is, this really is the first domino. If it doesn't fall, none of the rest of them fall. So, um, I still think it's a great opportunity for us to really expand with what, what Riddle has, has seeded in our community and, you know, become, you know, kind of a force in, you know, what's going on with, uh, with aerospace and, you know, in this part of Florida.
Um, well, you all hate to keep interjecting, but everyone keeps riding down my street. Uh, and so this was on my list as an important item for me tonight. Um, and this is important. I, I wanna say it's, 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 it's so important in our community, that we try to get it right and try to do everything we can. I, I just say to you this, let's think about what happened to the old, uh, what's that center back, uh, where Outback used to be?
I don't know the name of the center.
Okay, but we know where Outback used to be? And we see what it looks like now?
Desolate.
Completely desolate. Okay, nothing there but one, one, the seamstress, I think, is the only thing there.
Just to be a bookstore.
My business on a regular basis.
Mine too.
You know, we, you know, but, but that's what happens to these type of facilities if you don't have a plan and get them repurposed almost immediately, because the longer they lie dormant, the more dormant they become, and they become a blight on the community. And Chad Hagel is an excessively competent, resourceful gentleman. And his ideas and the project that he hopes to bring here, it's, it's impressive. It's impressive. I'm, I'm just sort of, and I, I dare, I want all of us to sort of see sort of what he wants to do. Um, you know, and I'm, I don't get that excited very often, but I don't wanna see this place turning to something that ISB, which we've done a lot to bring to where it is now, and it turns into looking like Outback. Um, so he's got some ideas, but, uh, and some of the things that I wanna say this to staff. First of all, I concur with that, I, I'm, I'm already willing to write a letter and have agreed to write my own personal letter. But I, I think we should come up to speed on what his plan is, so we as a commission could consider passing a resolution of just support that the dialogue start, because it's important to the posterity of our community, the things that we wanna achieve overall. And the types of jobs and the commitments that he's already got lined up, blow your mind away, and when you see what he wants to do. So, my other point that I wanted to make to staff was to encourage you to, you gotta go outside of the box with him. Because he's got some ideas and things that are not even a part of our, uh, framework, things that we've never done before, but that the modern world is starting to do as it relates to how you, uh, allow for advertisement on buildings and, uh, being able to advertise above the building and paint on the buildings on the top. Things that I, I saw when I was in California, I'm like, hey, that's what that guy was talking about. Uh, so, be prepared, but, but, but work with him to enable him to be able to, to execute his plans, which I'm sure you will. But I've wanted to make sure tonight that I voiced my strong support in, in working with him, um, to that end. But also, um, to trying to help him get over the hurdle, 'cause he's at a point where, if he doesn't get past this, it won't happen. And we don't know what, what that becomes. So, um, I just wanted to strongly, strongly echo that and ask you all to, to hear from him and then consider a resolution as quickly as possible.
Come to the next meeting?
Uh, probably. Sure, he wouldn't mind.
Does that have to-
Does it reach out to him?
I don't know what his schedule looks like, but-
Okay, see if he can come, yeah.
Okay.
Give us a quick comment and, uh, presentation, so we know what we're supporting.
My, my final comment is, as, uh, we move to the next Commissioner comments, that'll make the halfway point of Commissioner comments tonight, so.
Yeah.
Already set the record.
Long night.
Of Commissioner comments, but, but it's been great conversation.
Yes, it has.
Absolutely worth it.
I'm gonna try to keep mine brief, because I'm looking at Paula's, and Paula's are this long.
Oh.
They are nice. They really are, the whole page is filled. So, just a couple of quick comments, and, um, that is that on Thursday, which is tomorrow, the Race Foundation will be in the Derbyshire Plaza. They're gonna be giving away free backpacks, um, they're gonna be giving free haircuts to the children, socks, undies, and uniforms. And I think that's tomorrow at eleven, and that's in the Derbyshire Plaza. Um, Melanin Too Rich is hosting their festival, and it's gonna be quite a bit of fun things for the family to come out and do prior to back to school. Um, they're hosting it at DME, and, uh, they're gonna have all kind of the bouncy houses and, um, tag, and, and, um, they're gonna have dodgeball competitions, just you name it, that's what they're gonna have, and, um, so you can head on out.
Is that Saturday?
Saturday.
Yes.
What time?
And a Sunday. Well, she's got a couple of days, but I think that portion of it is Saturday. Um, and it, there, that's, she's got a lot of partners, a lot of, lot of organizations that, that are partnering with her for that. Um, speaking of STEM, DME, STEM camp is coming up. I don't have the exact date, but just to know that, um, they'll be looking for some support. And they're, they host a, a giant STEM where they invite all of the children from all of the county schools to come out that day and participate in all kind of STEM activities. So, if that's something you may want to, um, support. Also, in, um, just talking about, uh, the straws that Commissioner Delgado, um, all of the stars and all the stars that live in Laguna Beach, they're now using metal straws. And they actually bring their metal straws with them to the restaurant that they go to. So, that is something that you can push. Uh, I don't know about bringing metal straws, 'cause I like to be able to see what's inside of mine and make sure it's clean, but, um, I hear, I, I've been reading about it, and it's been this big, um, lessening their carbon footprint, and that's how they're doing it, by bringing their own, own straws, own cups, you name it, they're bringing it to the, uh, to the restaurants. Um, lastly, Commissioner Reed talked about a few months ago the shopping centers that are being, that, that no one is, is at those shopping centers. It's, uh, you mentioned that tonight as well, and, um, Mayor also mentioned it. With regards to those properties not becoming blighted properties in the communities when we're working so hard to freshen up the community, um, and I've been looking and researching, and I'm gonna continue to look and research, um, um, ideas about business co-ops where, um, people that, that are looking, especially small businesses, uh, minority businesses, women in business, just businesses, period, are using, um, those buildings in different communities. They're using those as co-ops. So, there's the shared space. As we know, brick and mortar buildings for businesses now, um, I don't really see them making a comeback right now. Um, but shared spaces are great spaces for, uh, for smaller businesses to get started. I know we have the little small one that we have over there, and I'm talking larger-sized co-ops that are, um, that, that communities and the cities are charging them a certain fee to use those co-ops. Um, so they'll share, they'll have their own computers and stuff, but they share different spaces. And I think that's something that we could look into. One, it'll help us support, um, our own community and our own small business people who, um, may run a business out of their home, but are looking to do something a little bit different, or maybe looking for something just a little bit bigger type space. So, uh, maybe those are some things that we can look at as well. I'm gonna continue to research that and continue to see how other cities are using their old, um, shopping centers and buildings for, um, shared space and co-ops. And, um, also, with the idea that three out of four of our elementary schools' letter grade was a D, that's really problematic. And sometimes I feel as though, as a commission, because mo, the majority of us don't have children in the schools or have children in elementary schools, have a priority to, um, support those schools. But I tell you one thing, when people look to see where they want to live and move to, one of the first things they check is what the school's grade is. And so, um, we talk about bringing people to Daytona, and we want them to move here, and we want, you know, um, we want higher-end people to, to look at us as valuable and as a place to, as a place to move their families to, but we're not really getting down to the nitty-gritty of supporting schools. And I know that it is not our job to financially support schools, but, um, I do know that there is more that can be done to help the plight of the schools that we service, which is those three elementary schools, um, Champion, Palm Terrace, and Westside all received D grades. No, nobody wants to move into a community where they feel like their children are going to be, um, are not gonna be as educated in a, in an area that may be ten minutes right up the road. So, going forward, I would like very much for us to, um, as a commission, to look at ways that we can better support our community schools. And I'm not saying, I'm not talking about just, uh, I'll give two fifty out of my bike week funds. I'm talking about real change in our elementary schools, so that our community looks viable, um, when it comes to people moving here and choosing certain areas in which they would like to live. Um, I think, um, only one school got, what school was that?
One mainland, mainland school.
No, Tur, yeah.
One mainland elementary, Turriti.
Turriti. So, one mainland elementary school. Um, so, I, I hope that we can, going forward, really start to look at whether you're a, a commissioner with children in the schools, or whether you can afford to send your child to a private school, that our job still is to look out for those that may not touch us personally. Um, so, going forward, that's something that I'd like to, to look at more.
And the Melanin Rich time?
Oh, okay, so, thank you. The Melanin Too Rich time, Saturday is from eleven to three is the brunch, and Sunday is her big community day, where she's gonna have all of the, uh, activities for all family members, adults, children, and that's from twelve to six at DME, um, Sports Academy. And that's all my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. Our city manager has begun to provide us with a monthly report. I'm, I'm assuming it's online, am I correct? Do we make, um, I know we get hard copies, do, does the audience get hard copies that's here? That's just, okay, so we-
I don't think we may, we can provide those, sir.
Oh, okay. There were a few, there were a few things on there that I just wanted to bring to your attention. When's the last time you've driven down Nova Road?
Yesterday.
Doesn't it look good? That new landscaping, it looks really great. It's, it's kind of different, though, because you're so accustomed to seeing the cars on, well, you can't please everybody. But you, um, you're so accustomed to seeing the cars on the other side of the road, it's kind of like, whoa, you know, where am I? But, um, I, I think it's really looking good, particularly between Bellevue and North Street, where a majority of it is in Zone Six. And then with, um, Phase Two on the Henry Lee Park, uh, that's gonna start this month. And, and both of these were, we got the money from FDOT for Nova Road, and we got, um, Daytona Beach Racing and Red Grant for what's happening on, um, in Henry Lee Park, which is on, um, uh, Bellevue. Uh, we had a standstill, but we're about to start back up with our Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., uh, streetscape between Orange Avenue and International Boulevard. And I believe, um, I think that started today. We had to postpone that, I forgot what the reason, but it was a good reason, all right?
Update the plans as a result of the community meeting.
Oh, okay, updated the plans as a result of the community meeting. And we did have that other community meeting, so I think our street skates for, um, uh, MMB will be starting soon as well. Then also, um, you know, next week is, don't you, I can hear the sound of footprints. Don't you hear them? They're coming. They're coming. It's time for school to start, and we need to, we need to pray. We really need to pray. We need to pray for our schools, for the administrators, for the teachers, for the children, and for the families. children, and for the families that attend our schools because so much is happening. And, you know, it's a totally different child than it was for you and for I. And the peer pressure that they're experiencing today is nothing like what you and I experienced. So we need to keep them prayed up and as Commissioner Henry was saying, perhaps even do some volunteering. You know, all of us have some type of talent or skill that we can give back, that we can encourage a child with. So consider doing that, won't you please? And in having said that, the Daytona Beach Police Department is asking for school supplies. I've seen all over the media, why aren't we giving our backpacks? Well, this is something that we are doing this year, is providing, they're doing a backpack school supply drive and they'd like for you to bring things either to the main headquarters on, what's that street? Valor Road or to the Midtown Substation. And they're giving you until August thirtieth to do that. So won't you help, won't you help someone? I see the advertisements all the time about what the teachers need and what the students need and if you knew what the list was, you could provide a child with the supplies that they need, which would help a teacher as well. Midtown Motown continues this Saturday, it is the second Saturday in the month, and this Saturday, the concert will feature The Temptations and the Fortops Tribute Band. So join us at seven PM and bring your lawn chair and there will be vendors there for food and what have you and just come and have a good old time. Then I wanted to share that I also spoke with the manager and the attorney yesterday in my secret meeting about, not gonna let that die, about a historical area, not so much a historical district, but looking at Second Avenue. You know, we know it, old school, yes, it's Second Avenue and always will be Second Avenue, but we've named it Dr. Mary McLoughlin Boulevard. And I asked him about the signage that's on Palmetto that names it a historical district. Well, as it was explained to me, we don't necessarily want a district because then that's gonna come with some restrictions that would just be even more impeding on what we're striving to do. So we're looking at a historical area and I was asking about signage that says historical Second Avenue on that street and the signs being maroon, I wonder why? And to go along with the other things that we're proposing as a result of that community meeting. But, and we're also looking at murals. I know a couple of other redevelopment areas have passed that through their boards. We're looking at murals. I see Kim Moton in the audience, she's one of the first people to come to the mayor and myself to talk about murals. In fact, we have a new business owner that's asking for some temporary murals for the Carnival that's about to happen in our city. So we're gonna be pushing that forward as well. And then lastly, and see, this might've been long, but I'm quick on that. Lastly, there is nothing happening during the bike festivities, and this time it would be Bike Fest, on this side of International Speedway. As you know, we no longer have the Safari Club. Also, we don't have the Amets. I don't know if you've known that that was, that's been burned and they're not doing anything there. So we're looking at something that we can do on this side to support some activities and to bring some funding on this side of the community. So as, as I continue to plan with staff on that, I'll bring that to you as well. That concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent, thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, Commissioner Reed, you and I briefly discussed the concept of having a meeting between us.
Yes.
And it would be called a special meeting.
A public meeting.
Could you just explain to everybody what that is, please?
It's a basic sunshine issue, if two commissioners wish to meet, two or more, wish to meet on any matter which may come back before the commission, we simply have to publicly notice the meeting through the clerk's office and allow the public to attend.
And we could talk about things between the two zones?
Exactly.
So one of the things that came up, and you and I were both there, was at the event we had at Mount Zion.
Mm-hmm.
And I spoke to the city manager at the event about how could we possibly, yep, I'm sorry, how could we possibly rezone areas on Second Avenue to allow for some sort of meeting place, gathering place, entertainment lounge?
Mm-hmm.
And so is that still a possibility, sir, to be able to do some rezoning in that area?
Have to look at it, yes, sir.
Okay, that might be something we discussed.
And we need to set our date and then we'll tell the public when we're meeting because that defining line for us is something that's very critical to that community and together we can make a difference.
Super, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds like my message.
I was delighted that there's some interest in reviving the city rec. I don't know if the, and I appreciate having a presentation with the vets. I don't know if they know of any grant possibilities. I don't know if we could turn them on to planning solutions, maybe they might have some ideas because they would, I would think, be eligible for either Army or, you know, veterans grants and historic grants, Echo Grants, Racing and Rec, somewhere where we could help them there because I do think that is a valuable piece of history for Daytona Beach that should be preserved if at all possible. And like somebody mentioned, it is a perfect place, what with the Veterans Memorial Bridge and the plaza going in. So I'm hoping very much that that could come to fruition, that we can figure out some way to help them.
Okay, excellent. Okay, I will try not to go down my entire list. It's a good thing you guys have been through most of it, so that's a good thing. First thing I wanna say is that I was hoping to have a meeting on next Wednesday with Ms. Moton, who's in the audience, and some others along with, I hadn't told the manager and our attorney, but I wanted both of them to be a part of representatives. Because out of that meeting on MMB, which is there, you guys both share that zone, there's a lot of passion and interest in that area. And they have some ideas and I think what we now need to do is figure out how we can empower them legally to do some of the things that they wanna do. So, and it's, they've been talking, I know, these two ladies, but this really lends itself to some of our rules and adjusting them so that they can have some of the things that they mentioned, like lounges and like murals, making that, we've described what it takes to do it. Let's figure, maybe, maybe we might wanna consider making it an arts district. I don't know if that's a good idea, but let's talk about what we can do to really transform that area while we're talking about a streetscape so that folks wanna come there and then we can take advantage of some of the low hanging fruit. But first, be sure that we're hearing from them and then doing the things that we can do. So that might not be Wednesday, but it might, we'll see. But either way, that's important to me and I know it's important to them and important to at least two severance of the commission other than myself. You know, I went out to California with three young ladies who were quite pleasurable. My wife accompanied us on our dime, but I just wanna say that they were outstanding representatives of the city of Daytona Beach and they learned a lot. Each have written proposals for us to establish a youth advisory council here in our city and are agreeable to helping us to form that. We found, we met with thirty other mayors and their young people from all across this country. And there are many cities that have youth advisory councils and they're not that expensive. Most spend fifteen, twenty thousand dollars at the most on an advisory council that does a litany of things and including meeting twice a week. So what I would like is you all's permission to join with those three young ladies and someone that he designates to help us to come up with a proposal that they would then present to you that would enable us to start our own youth advisory council for several reasons. One, that would enable them to volunteer in our community. We have a lot of things that we do as a city that we might want them to participate in. Some things that we support, like Juneteenth, some things that we have, like our Motown Festival. We may want them to be there to pass out flyers and to become sort of city ambassadors who are a part of our city. But other things that were discussed was a part of youth advisory councils is helping them to engage other young people in the electoral and voting process, having summits where they're able to voice their opinions. If you had heard these young people, you would not be fretful about the future of our country. And one of our young people was offered a job. And one of the others, and many of these, they were already youth councils. And one of our other young ladies made her way to the center stage, onstage, to be one of the presenters. I was so proud and pleased with what they did and pleased with the ideas that they brought back. The other thing is, we can't control it all, it has to be something that they lead with our guidance. But at any rate, if it pleases you all, we would like to come back and present you all with a proposal for something that could be a part of our city's future. So is that okay? Okay. And then the final thing is Commissioner Henry discussed the fact that we had three of our schools to earn a D. Now, I will say this, as an educator, and I will say this as, as one who works in schools and how difficult and challenging it is to move a school, but I'll say that if Turriti can be a B, I firmly believe that our other schools should be able to be Cs or Bs. Now, Turriti receives a lot of support, but they've done a good job from Mr. Henson to the current gentleman there to stabilize in the school. But we have to not only support the school, but the reason that I changed the mayor's initiative from backpack giveaway to a reading initiative is that the most pressing challenge in schools is reading. And so if you're listening to me, as I said earlier, we start the mayor's reading initiative, a second component, because we've been doing it all summer, where we've had officers come in and give books to our students, read to them and excite them about reading. Now, we wanna continue this every Thursday from five thirty to six thirty, where we're gonna continue to read to our five, six, and seven year olds. But ultimately, we are asking for people to come in and volunteer and ultimately, we have to figure out a strategy for saying to our parents, bring your kids and we will put them through a program that helps them to learn how to read. And, and, and it, we have a reading expert on our commission who's as gifted as anyone I know at taking kids to school prepared to read, three and four year olds. So we will be leaning on you to maybe train some folks who wanna, who wanna do this. But we, we're in the infant stages, but we're calling on everyone who's committed to this task because it's gonna, we gotta do some things that are different and out of the box to support our schools in ways that we, things that we control. I'm not saying, because it's not our job to fund the schools, but it is our job to support our students who attend those schools. So that is where we are on that and that concludes my comments. Mayor?
Mayor, I did have one final thought on code enforcement with regard to short-term rentals to expedite the process, which was one of the concerns. If there is a finding by the code enforcement officers of an irreparable harm or, there can be an expedited process where it goes straight to the code board without that notice requirement, which is part of the CEB one process. So all it needs to happen, and this may relate particularly to special events with an irreparable harm because the special event will have passed by the time they can enforce it, they can go straight to the code board and have those fines imposed. So a thought.
A question. Before we move forward on this, are we still in the appeal process from the suit that we just had? Is that still appealable?
That is still being appealed, yes.
Okay.
That is all, thank you.
Okay, so does it affect us changing anything?
No, no, it's just, it's just an option that I don't know that we've explored before that avoids the notice and the opportunity to cure before there's any fine imposed. So if you've got an ineffective remedy, if you will, through the code board, through the notice and cure process, you can go straight to the code board, but it'll require an extra finding by the code enforcement officer.
The, could it go to the special magistrate?
Yes, so the way these are prosecuted, there's a decision point in the prosecution process where depending on the type of case, it'll either go to the magistrate or the code board. So that's discretionary by staff.
Let's just say theoretically during Bike Week, if we had, we have Vekeljik and, don't we have a second one?
We do. We have two magistrates.
Forgot who the second one is.
I can't think of the name offhand, but.
Office is right over here.
Right. Rigio, is it?
What?
Rigio?
Rigio.
Is that right? Yes, that would expedite the process to avoid this standard scheduling.
Do they write a violation on Friday and take it before Vekeljik or Rigio on Saturday?
There has to be some reasonable notice, but yes, they could move more swiftly to a hearing.
Very good, good work. You work fast.
Third time tonight.
Yes.
I have help from staff with texting, so thank you to my staff.
That's beautiful, I love it. This has been one of our longest meetings, but I dare say that it has had nothing to do with public participation. So we will take a five-minute break and I personally eagerly await the participation of our public. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, no. Shh, shut the camera off of me.
Okay, our first speaker tonight is Corey Hazen and on deck is John Nicholson.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, my name is Corey Hazen and I'm here to represent the members of this community who are willing to run in when others are running out. I represent the members of this community who are willing to risk their lives for you. I represent the men and the women of this community that this community has chosen to breathe life back into its body. I represent your firefighters. As this commission is aware, your firefighters and the full-time employees of the city are in contract negotiations. Negotiations can become very confusing and we understand that. We also understand that the firefighters are probably the most confusing due to the hours that we work. I'm going to try and simplify a few things for you, all right? But I also wanna agree with Mr. Sexton in that if you pay your lawn guys fifteen dollars an hour, you're probably gonna have the best lawn guys. I also think that if you paid your firefighters fifteen dollars an hour, you'd have the best firefighters. So I appreciate that. Roughly ten percent of your firefighters make eleven dollars and eighty-five cents an hour. Eleven dollars and eighty-five cents an hour, real numbers. Is that what you wanna pay the person that might be responsible for saving your life? One of your firefighters, Richard Petito, he's been a firefighter with the city for over thirteen years. He makes fourteen dollars and fifty-three cents an hour. Fourteen fifty-three after thirteen years serving this community. And that's just one example, there's others like it. Pay ranges are great, but when you hear firefighters, think about the people, the men and women that come here. We're not a line item, we're not a pay range, because as things are now, we're never gonna get there. We're people, we're members of this community. Your firefighters work fifty-six hours a week. Fifty-three hours of those are straight time. Three hours is normal pay. So think fifty-three hours a week for eleven dollars and eighty-five cents. That's equivalent.
You have to come back on the next meeting, we appreciate you.
You can agree.
Yeah, I know. Just agreeing with what you said.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
John, can't blame the late hour on you tonight.
I know. You'd be surprised how much two minutes counts.
Yep.
But I do like the idea that you brought up six of my major ideas. It's been years that I've talked about schools and we've said, oh, it's not the city's business. I talked about reading with Scarlett Golden, sorry, it's not an issue. A lot of these things are issues. We talked about compression, what happened during the recession, what happened to our employees. Those things that I've brought up and you guys don't listen, all right? Now, people aren't bringing them up. We have to be involved with our school. I was a school teacher. I was a school teacher, all right? When we had that incident with Charles Cherry, wouldn't back the woman because he didn't vote for her, and took money out of the black community because of votes. We can't do that, all right? The money has to be spent where it needs to be spent. Secondly, the rec center. There's money out there. Ed Kelly was complaining that the city never asked for any money. There's like $2, $3 million every year, he says, that we don't ask for. We could ask for it for the rec center.
They ask for more money than anybody.
The Avista project. There's six projects on the beach side that are on hold, four of which the city is holding up, all right? We can't not push our projects. You're asking to push the projects out on the Home Depot. What about the ones on the beach side? I know some of you don't consider us part of the city. We had, remember the employee that says the beach side is not part of the city? We had a city commissioner that our schools on the beach side are not city schools, all right? You heard it, four. No, there's six elementary schools. Ortona is in the city of Daytona Beach, so is Longstreet.
She was referring to the mainland schools that didn't have ARB.
She didn't say that. You said that, Mayor. She just referred to our schools.
Okay.
We're very sensitive on the beach side when it comes to the idea that we don't get our fair share of funding. We've heard it many times on, on the midtown area that they don't get their fair share. We don't get our fair share as well, all right? First step. There was a misconception about first step. You have to solve it, because there's the lease. All of these things are coming up that they thought was settled, and it's not. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Norma Bland.
Greetings, Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Key Street. I was outside tonight protesting, and this is one of the signs that I held up. It says, "Stop discrimination. We want to be heard during the city commission meeting. Stop violating our rights. Public comments are heard after, during, do your job." We don't have this problem at the school board, at the county, or other places, not in Alma, not in Holly Hill, not in South Daytona. We have that problem here, so the news journal was here today, and they took the pictures. Also, I'd like to say tonight, and we had been told that we can't use this bathroom, but I was outside sitting there, and she came, Allison Brown, and I was patting her to go through there. Policeman was going through there. Mr. Hazel, the one that just got through speed and whose time was up, he went through there. So that's discrimination again. You don't need to allow certain people to go back there, and if this place is broke, they need to fix it. We pay a lot of taxes, and we vote at Dunn. Okay, tonight I brought up to you about the racism that went on concerning Sonia Wiles and Tommy Huger. You did not have in place anything to address these issues of hardcore racism, discrimination, and sexual harassment, but issues came before you. You need to address them. I have all the paperwork I came to get today, plaintiff Sonia Wiles openly voiced objections to illegal discriminatory action of her, to all department heads, to the city manager, to the deputy chief, and others relating to discrimination and harassment relating to her rights, and, and the other minorities who was working for this city encountered. Plaintiff engaged in protective activities to complain about the ongoing and severe preparation, harassment, and doing towards her by her supervisors, and racism relating to Thomas Huger Maller, and the ongoing racism and sexism that she incurred by here. So I'd like to say to you tonight, you need to address these issues. She told everybody, nothing is done about it. Then they telling me, I can't go out there, that door, you got other people, policeman, Hazel, hurry, take, and pat, hurry back there. Racism is a disease, and let's get it fixed. Stop it.
Yes, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Norma Bland, and on deck is Patricia Hurd.
I need you to get hurt. She didn't do it on purpose. I know she would.
Norma Bland, 1324 Imperial Drive, Daytona Beach, Florida. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Where's Jim Chisholm?
I'm not sure where he is.
Well, he needs to be here to hear this.
I'm sure he can hear you out there.
Okay, I hope so. We previously had a race relations advisory board here, Mr. Mayor, prior to your being elected. I sat on that board with credentials. I would like to know, could that board be revisited and maybe come back on as part of one of the advisory boards, because it's needed, and it would certainly help.
Was that the community relations board?
Community relations, but let's, let's rename it to race...
I think that was the name of it.
And community relations.
Okay.
It sounds a little bit better for Daytona. I would also like to thank the members of the Daytona Beach Police Department, especially Deputy Chief Jakari Young, because I wear his phone out. Also, Captain Scott Goss. Three weeks prior to this young man being stabbed, I walked that address into Daytona Beach Police Department and told them it was a time bomb. Three weeks later, that young man was dead. There are, according to the Southern Poverty Law Center, 75 hate groups across the state of Florida, with at least nine based in our region, which is a 30% increase in the number of hate groups. The reason I'm bringing this to you is because I had a talk with about 50 young people who are getting ready to arm themselves because of white supremacy when they go back to school. I have been told they're going to get their uncle's guns. I reported it to Jakari. They're going to find Big Mama guns because they are scared to death. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking you to encourage Daytona Beach Police Department to have whether it is a summit, so we can get together with parents. Let's not think this could not happen to Daytona Beach, because Sanford, Florida, they got white supremacists in Sanford, Florida. They got the Klan when I go to the meat store in Sanford, right there on the other side of the cabbage patch. So we need to rethink with, with conformity when we are engaging with people, because everybody is not like you and I. There's a spike in 2017...
Thank you, ma'am.
...as opposed to prior years, where people have used weapons of mass destruction, and our city is sitting naked.
Thank you, Ms. Bland.
Thank you.
Oh, this was important. These are all going to take that time.
Our next speaker is Patricia Hurd, and on deck is Jim Schultz.
Cheated you out in 15 seconds anyway. I did cheat you, talking.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you. My name is Patricia Hamilton-Hurd, 822 Vernon Street. I will not talk about fair share and discrimination. First of all, I would like to congratulate the police department for the STEM program. I stopped by several times, and it was wonderful. Now, number one, Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard. Work has begun, but it did not begin the day it's said, which was Monday. I'm concerned about when it's ending. It's ending after Bike Week, which means that our bikers coming from out of town, they usually go down Martin Luther King, they're going to have to find detours to go, okay? Because the project supposed to be done, finished March the 20th, which is about five days or so after the Bike Week. Now, I think I have it right, $2.6 million, billion dollars, or whatever. That's okay. B Street is still money, and money doesn't mean a thing when you don't use it right. Dr. MMBB was talked about three years, not, not Dr. MLK, three years ago, okay? We just getting work done. MMBB, you're talking about beautification. There is more to be done on MMBB than beautification of trees. And yes, I was the one saying, oh, the road didn't look good right now. I want you to keep an eye on those trees, because when they grow, they're going to come together, and you won't be able to see the west side from the east side, especially there by Cypress Street Park there. Sidewalks, we need sidewalks on Madison, over there by, what's his name, Buddy Young Park, and all of that. The other day, we saw the lady pushing a baby in the street because sidewalks. I'm just saying these things because B Street going to expand, B Street, but what about Bellevue and other parts of the city? And last, you know, discrimination. Panhandle's were removed at ISB. Why did you send them down to Martin Luther King?
Thank you, ma'am.
And International, right there by Checkers.
Our next speaker is Jim Schultz, and on deck is Mr. John Burge.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, they need to get him off of there. They need to get him. Just like them to get him.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard Drive. Interesting night. You know, I fluctuate in exactly what I want to say, but then sometimes I try to craft it by what I hear. The reality is, I wanted to speak about fluoridation and vitamin D. The reality is, those are both racially charged articles, items. I didn't know it, that that was the way I was going to present it, but right from the very first study they did on fluoridation, Grand Rapids, 1945, when they did the final results, Russell showed, 1962, that blacks were damaged twice of whites. There went out a letter to Washington, what are we going to do when we go to DeKalb County with so many negroes? Because they were concerned they were going to be harming them far more than whites. They lost that concern. They never told anybody, hey, that's a bad joke. Vitamin D, Hollis and Wagner, 2009, is a study I've talked a lot about. They studied premature birth in babies, 400, 2,000, or 4,000 international units. Black women were three times more likely to be severely deficient and put their babies at much higher risk of premature births. They cut preeascansia, gestational diabetes, but especially in half, they cut premature If you gave them even larger dose, you could cut it 70%, they found in the subsequent years of the study. The Health Department doesn't give a red raft keister about that. When I sat down and talked with them, and Dixie Moregees, there's, we would if we could, but we can't. We follow what we're told. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Our next speaker is John Burge, and on deck is Paul Pike.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, brother Burge.
I had to dress up. I had no one else to dress. You will always have hate groups. You will always have disappointments in life, and I'll be in my shift. You know what I learned? Love is a powerful thing. You often talk about all these guns, y'all talk about we got this problem, that problem, this happened, that happened. Guess what you don't talk about? I ain't heard nobody talk about love. And I ain't heard nobody talk about, what they say? Seeking answers. That's for the mass shooting. You know what I mean? And so what we got is, we got a situation where everybody wants something solved, but do they really want to get involved? And I talk about my neighborhood, Orange Avenue, and surrounding area, where all the happens at, the stabbing, this, and that. But guess what? Most big bad or infillous in our neighborhood have left the neighborhood. So now we got the little young thugs running around taking over our neighborhood, and the people that's trying to do something, they take them to jail. That's called a name. All I'm trying to say to you all is, we got a problem. And the problem is, the Bible is real. It talks about everything that's happened. You don't have no pastors coming up, they don't talk. We got people laying down on North Street like this on the ground, they totally discouraged, ready to give up. And guess what we do? We go in our church houses, y'all going them little polar walls, y'all say, oh, praise God, y'all give up the money, and everybody passing out the spirit or whatever, and then you don't even go in your own community and do no what? Outreach. Outreach mean what? Get up off your booty, go out there and see if you can help somebody. And if everybody would choose to do something like that to help somebody in their neighborhood, nobody's black people. Because we black people, y'all always talk. I heard so many black people talk so much, just, you know, I just like to hear y'all talk. And y'all still talking today, because you want somebody else to do your job. And whose kids are those? Our kids. They come here and do. So instead of you talking about it sometime, why don't y'all talk to your pastor? Do things. We used to have Baptist Training Union, all this stuff. We don't have nothing no more. Churches are closed, guns are shooting, everybody getting guns, so hey, we might as well all get guns. You know what I love? Love. Love is a powerful thing. That officer came to me and talked to me like a man, I liked him now. You're not really liking him at first, but now you know, he's come and talked to you. So God bless you all. Talk about more than love instead of guns. God bless you all.
I bless you, John. That's right. Love you.
Our next speaker is Paul Pike, and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
Say some good stuff.
Mayor, I'd like to relinquish my time to Corey Hazen.
No, we don't do that.
No, 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 you don't get to do that. You don't get to do that. No, I ain't going for no yielding time.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Paul Pike. I'm IFF 1162's vice president. Did you finish off where Corey was? As he was saying, your firefighters work 56 hours a week. They're only compensated overtime over 53, as was spoke about earlier. That's an additional 832 hours per year that they work. That's roughly 20.8 weeks if you were to work a 40-hour schedule. We're away from our families, missing dinners, birthdays, we're working Christmas, holidays, Thanksgiving, while everybody else gets to go home and enjoy their lives. We've been told that our circumstance is unique, and we do understand that, and we do 100% agree that we do work a very unique schedule. But we are proud to serve this community. We're very proud of the community and the commissioners and all the things that you guys have done over the years for us and for the citizens, but we are very tired of being forgotten in this situation. This is a 10-year problem that we've been trying to fix, and now we're into a whole different situation the way that the $15 an hour thing has been going. But we just ask that you please do not forget about us this year, and that we reevaluate this a little bit. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Our final speaker this evening is Doyle Lewis.
All firefighters work 24 hours everywhere. That's just a normal thing.
Good evening, Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, USA. I've got about eight things, but I'm probably going to just get through about three. The one thing, and this is a small joke, but very factual, there's only one set of people in America that has a reservation, no matter where they go. I would like to ask somebody to answer that, but it's the American Indian. It's the only people I know that has a reservation no matter where they go. Now, as far as being entitled in Daytona Beach, I'm not really sure who can be entitled, because I've had speeches on this and talked to people about finding a homeless shelter built for years. The love of keeping the shelter on track has always been not in my backyard, straight from Daytona Beach. Now, it's not in my front door with the safe zone. There never was a safe zone. People make their own safe zone. It's the American way. Judge Schuman had it right. Start the shelter out with safety. Don't mix bad people with good people that want help. Trust me, if somebody wants help, they'll walk 10 miles. They'll ride a bicycle 40. I do. As far as making sure that the police take the homeless only to the shelter? Ha. Let's make sure they can take them to the shelter, but let's not ruin the shelter. You spent millions of dollars, now you want to make it where just people can lay around outside? No, don't think so. Need to rethink that. Too many chiefs make nothing happen. If you don't believe me, 75 hate groups in Florida, that's a lot of chiefs. Now, the water supply to the homeless shelter needs to be inside. It's actually a law, if you ever supply water to an individual that needs water, and this is way back in the books, you can never stop supplying water to that end... and this is way back in the books, you can never stop supplying water to that individual group. So, that's going to be funny when you try to change that safe zone from where it is. That's on the books. Thank you.
No, we don't have any more speakers. Good night, Daytona Beach, we appreciate each other.